So I call us in the city council work session to order. Tonight's work session meeting, we're doing a well, just an update of our annual fees, charges, utility rates. We'll call it the annual run your water flush your toilet meeting. And then we'll get into our city council meeting tonight. Jeff, will you call the role?
Yeah, Spencer Pizza here. That's for small one here. Council Sheldon here. Council Walker.
Here.
Council expert here.
That's for him. I'm here.
Air pulling here.
Always the fun meeting.
Thank you, Mayor. Yep. So this is what we're calling investing in Sandy's future.
Review of our Better than my title.
Our fees and charges updates. We do this on an annual basis, usually before the start of the new fiscal year, which is July 1st. And hold a work session and then come back with a public hearing for the especially on the utility rate side. We'd like to have the opportunity for the public to weigh in on the proposed increases to our fees and charges. Tyler will help me present this tonight. We kind of split up the presentation, but please ask questions throughout. I think the slides are posted to the agenda packet and the staff reports up there too. And then we also have Jenny and Greg, and I think Kelly may be popping on virtually tonight to answer questions if you have any questions specifically about the fees and charges proposed in their departments. But Tyler and I were trying to cover sort of the high level, what's in front of you and what's being proposed. So I said, you know, most years we do these fee and charges updates on an annual basis before the fiscal year. We did take a pause during COVID. Like most utility companies and other cities, we do it annually to keep up with inflation, construction costs escalation. And really been trying over the last few years to move in the direction of more regular updates of our rates and charges rather than big increases, you know, periodically or irregular increases, you know, every other year or something like that. It gives our rate pairs a little more predictability that every year there'll be an adjustment to the rates and fees. This year, of course, we're under a different scenario with high inflation. It's councils while we're like construction costs escalations that's going on right now with supply chain issues and labor shortages and all the rest of stories that you've heard. And that's kind of a continuing theme that is really compounding our situation. When we're in this historic period of massive infrastructure investments that are being mandated and are required for a community on the water wastewater side. So it's kind of rare for a community to have two big things happen at once. We just happened to roll the dice, like not roll the dice, but just it's our turn, so to speak, to reinvest in those facilities. To provide clean water, but also treat our wastewater by 2027. Multi-million dollar investments need to be completed. This has been been talked about for a while. So, you know, I am being a little bit repetitive on things that this council already knows. But for the, you know, public's information, it's, you know, this goes back a few years of council talking about these major investments. And having the council goal to really plan and provide our infrastructure in a sustainable manner. And at the same time, adopting a goal a couple of years ago too, about maintaining our financial strength and sustainability. And having great discipline and regular rate increases to make sure that we can implement our capital plans and provide sound infrastructure as a way that we accomplish those objectives. So the major things that these rate increases that are being proposed are funding. And we've gone into a lot of detail over the years with these projects is our Sandy Clean Waters project on the wastewater side. The Bull Run Water Supply and Water Master Plan improvements, which later tonight, the council will be reevaluating the decision for the Bull Run Supply project. The stormwater management area needs more investment and I'll be talking a little bit more about that in a little bit. Then we have Sandy net development fees and charges like SDCs and planning and building fees are also proposed for an adjustment. And then coming down like here later this year, another council ball that we're looking at is cost recovery on the recreation side. And making sure that our programs are consistent with what our community needs and wants. But also that we're adequately recovering the cost for providing those programs. So on the wastewater side.
What do you mean by that? They're like a recreational site like are you insinuating like movies in the park and that kind of stuff?
No, like classes, programs, you know, dance classes, camps, things like that. And coming out of COVID where we weren't doing very much for a couple of years and now we've staffed up. And we've engaged with a consultant to help us build a fee structure that more reflects what actually costs to provide those services. And the council will have a lot of policy input on that of, you know, what percent do you want to cost recover? Do you want to subsidize youth programs and instead recover more on the adult program? So this is part of the kind of churn that we'll go through. As we're also looking at things like the community campus and the future of our recreation program, what we want to provide today and into the future.
Right. That will dawn and then dawn be to.
My understanding is that customer cover is the first part of that is really an accounting effort to make sure that to see how costs are being and resources are being utilized to provide those services. So then you can put a number on it. And then the second half of that is then determine what you said in terms of how what do we want subsidized.
What do we want?
Cover on it.
Oh, you say we haven't done much in the last couple of years because of COVID stuff. So are you going to discuss some of the savings that we that can be applied for the next timeframe to be able to understand that we do have money left over from not expended to? So wasn't all spent on things that are non discernible, non negotiable, but things like wages, that's kind of stuff has to be spent, I suspect. But expenses on recreation things, that kind of stuff probably not the right money, right?
A little bit, especially in seniors, because we did do some staff layoffs and position eliminations in that department because we just couldn't open the senior center for a couple of years. The recreation side, you know, pretty small staff, small team on the recreation side that were able to do some events and able to do some programming, but certainly not at the level we were doing before to recover the costs of staff also that are there doing things like staffing, person trails advisory board and things like that. So the actual savings is not as much as you probably think to do a whole lot. And they're also one time savings. And so trying to account for that and ongoing like programming and stuff is probably not a very sustainable way to add programs. Unless you're seeding programs for the future, right? So maybe, you know, putting a trial balloon for a certain program you think may gain some traction. And then you can come back and recover the costs as you, you know, expand on that program.
I guess my thing is just our cost recovery for recreation, depending on different avenues our community goes into the future. I think it's going to be obviously a very important thing to make sure that we're really dialed in on and understand. So.
Yeah. So on wastewater. Council knows knows where we're at with this, I think, but on the wastewater treatment plant improvements for phase one, A, that's slated for completion during this winter, by the end of the year. Slayton is mobilized and working on that final package of improvements there. So about halfway through collection system improvements are almost complete with design on basis six and seven. And that'll also be completed for those that inflow and infiltration work that will happen this summer. Got the RFQ out for the facility plan amendment that's going to be taking place over the next year. And we continue work with MP and PDS permitting. And then working on coming up with our final loan application and closing for with you. That all does cost a lot of money. We've pumped in about 20 million. We'll be pumping in about 20 million into the existing collection system and treatment plant by the end of this year. And this program under the model that we're that we're currently using for our with the alone application was it shows a 10% increase that's being proposed for this fiscal year. Which translates to about $6, I think, for the average customer residential customer in Sandy that uses about seven CCF per month. Tyler just ran those numbers. Definitely a lot more water use in the summer than in the winter here, but so it's about $6. The rate model does have future rate increases to after this year, I think dropped down to nine or eight percent for a couple of years before leveling off. You know, these rate models and we'll present the water rate model at the second meeting this month. But these rate models, as this council is probably familiar with at this point, because we do this fairly regularly, a couple of times a year. We update these as we get project cost estimates updated. They change, you know, as we get better information, as our project estimates get more refined. Originally, I think the first time we did the wastewater rate model for this project. And we did the 100% rate increase, but it was the second year was going to be at 30. And then the third year, I think, was going to be a 16. And then as we refine the project and as we got better information about our SRF loans and with you and grant funding. We did a, you know, the 100% took a year off, did a 15% last year and now propose 10. So, you know, each, each time we do these models and get them updated, you know, things have, you know, fortunately, we usually are pretty conservative on the high end, but we're also on this project, working with our consultants and EPA with with you to determine that final loan amount that we can, the highest amount that we actually can borrow that that would be would be able to provide for this project. And we'll have a better picture once we get moving on the facility plan amendment. But we think we're probably in the ballpark with what we were originally proposing in that 100, 100 million or so project total project costs for for this project.
So Kathleen.
My question, Jordan. So, you know, when I was kind of scrolling through all the information, great stuff. What was a little confusing to me is how the SDCs kind of roll into all this. And the fact that, you know, when's the last time we updated our SDCs, of course, a lot of the expansion, you know, a lot of the big stuff for the being paid with, you know, with the and all that is a function of growth. And so, you know, instead of kind of putting it on the existing residents, you know, to the I realize they're, you know, obviously part of it, but how are we going about reevaluating our SDCs that we're charging and how often are we doing that? Is it part of this process? Is it separate? You know, how can we kind of update our water and wastewater SDCs as part of this effort?
Yeah. And so that's one of those items that's also on the horizon, like the cost recovery. We do it typically with the rate model updates. That's when we did the last wastewater SDC increases when we did that 100% rate increase for the rate pairs. We also did the SDC increase on wastewater. I think we'll probably reevaluate SDCs on wastewater once we get the facility plan amendment and see if anything changed in terms of those percent. And kind of in terms of what can be allocated out to SDCs as part of that project on the water side. That will be updated as well and and transportation too. And that comes after we have the master plans completed and the CIP completed.
So is that like next year or the year after?
Yeah. So the Water Master Plan, I think we're targeting September for
completion.
Yeah. So probably by the end of the year, maybe after the new year, we'll have kind of a sense of where we might land with that.
And we just, we just updated wastewater SDCs a year and a half ago, correct?
That's true. Yeah.
I mean, not that that's just, but kind of is just concerned. We hadn't done anything for, I think, the 15 years prior to that. So.
Yeah, but water, transportation, parks is tonight for presentation of the information.
But also with those updated costs and, you know, I mean, part of the whole SDC stuff is what your estimated costs are. And when the cost go out the roof, you kind of have to.
You got it. Oh, yeah.
So I have two questions. One may be more of a statement. So then prior to us increasing rates right now, shouldn't we be looking at those SDCs first, especially since we are in a higher inflation time right now? Shouldn't we be looking at that first so that we can not possibly alleviate some of the burden on current rate pairs? A. And then my second question is if we pivot, because we're going to meet about the bull run water. So if we pivot slightly from the direction that we're currently going, won't those rates be affected by that? And is this premature as far as wastewater and water rates looking at that right now?
So I'll get to water in a second. So the water rates are based on the assumption of
The direction we're going.
Yeah.
Right. And so that's why I'm just, I'm just curious if we're a little premature of looking at some of the, I know this is just a work session.
Yes, work session. This was at eight o'clock instead of six, it would be okay. On SDCs. Typically, we don't include SDC revenue in our debt ratio coverages when we go and do financing for loans and bonds because they're not predictable like rates are. So it's hard to bond against that kind of revenue. It's also smaller, right? It's not an ongoing source that comes in clumps. And it's not, you know, typically unless you have a lot of development or high SDC, you don't get the same level of revenue to support that kind of debt coverage. You need to do both, but you know, rates get up for these massive projects that updated every year. So, you know, if you adopt rates now, you're buying possibly smaller rate increases next year. If we come back with like a water SDC adjustment that can bump up how much investment comes in off a new development versus rate funded investment. But you still, the rates still have to match what you need for debt coverage for what we're projecting, for what needs, what we need to get in order to fund these projects with revenue bonds and loans and things like that.
So was the answer no?
Yeah, I guess.
And I know you want to move on to the next slide. Jenny or Jennifer? I've never asked you. Jennifer, Jenny, Jenny. So with Mike in the past, really, one time he did this. We had a couple of folks, commercial rate pairs that kind of got caught off guard that use abnormal amount of water for your typical business. Take, for example, the local dry cleaner, the local gym. You know, anyone that's consuming water. And so just some sort of notification, like headset kind of a process of some of these folks while they're going through their annual, you know, charging and planning. All these guys have commercial tenants, especially dry cleaning side, you know, just so they can do their due diligence as a business. Yeah, those just a couple of the habit, you know, mountain athletic club is obviously a lot less. You know, this many commercial clients that they're turning around and charging the individuals. But yeah, but yeah, anyone using a lot of water.
The school district is one of them.
School district.
That's good reminder.
Ever fresh, ever fresh.
We can pull the heaviest users.
Just always could have a headset, I think, caught off guard.
Right. And we have users outside of city limits too. So.
Yeah. At the water supply project. So about a year ago, the council made the decision to treat the bull run, the raw bull run water supply. Tonight, we're asking the council to reevaluate that decision based on updated costs and reevaluation of that project and other considerations like operations costs and the cotton, new information we got about the loan agreement or the wholesale water agreement. But that's later on the agenda. At a high level, we know this is an expensive project. So, you know, pipeline that we have to either a pipeline that we have to build to the filtration plant or a new treatment plant for the bull run water supply. Over the last couple of years, we've been updating our water master plan, which looks at our entire water system and the facilities that we have in our water system that includes reservoirs and the Alder Creek Treatment Facility. They need reinvestment. Alder Creek is how many years old at this point? In bad need of some improvements and investment, which will help offset the amount of water that would potentially have to buy from Portland. But these are, these are important projects that are necessary and required in order to meet the mandate to treat for the cryptosporidium from the water source. Alder Creek is in need of an investment to not just expand it so that can treat its full capacity of what we have water rights for on Alder Creek. But it just hasn't had a lot of investment over the last 20ish years or so. 45 years. Yeah.
In fact, you know, it was a couple of years ago that we got an update from our folks that managed that for us on the conditions of our, both our wastewater and our water plant in a work session. We get a lot of updates on wastewater, which is great. And we have an oversight committee. I think they're getting a lot of those updates. But I would be interested to read this, see what's going on over at that water plant a little bit. You know, not, not that we have to do it the very next work session, but I think it would be nice to have those folks back in for.
Sure. Yeah.
So, Jordan, last time we talked about the water with the city of Portland. They're very reticent. Well, they're more than that. They wouldn't tell us what those costs were going to be other than expect a big number. I'm going to, I don't know if I need to have you tell me what they are now. We're going to talk about it a little bit. They're giving us a number now?
Yeah. Wow. Yeah, we have better numbers and that's built into these, these models, how much we are planning to get to spend on treated water from the filtration.
So we'll be able to look at apples to apples. What's going to cost us to do the infiltration plant we talked about earlier? Now we're looking at Bull Run infiltration plant that Portland. So we'll be able to look at those numbers relatively secure.
Yeah.
Brown over there.
Filtration. Yeah.
And
I know. Get it out of there. So we are going to have some numbers that are relatively accurate.
So. Yeah.
So not jumping into later discussions, these numbers that you're showing here for the preliminary rate model. These are based on the lesser, lower cost of the two options we're looking at.
Yeah.
We also added in 35% contingency and escalated that. So they're very robust numbers.
Just so we know when we go into the later session, if we lean towards the more expensive option, he's going to adjust it up.
Yeah. So thank you. Jumping ahead to
How often does the city of Portland get to change their, what they're charging us?
Instead of 20 year contract?
It's a 30 year contract with an option for 20 year contracts. It's more expensive to have.
But you're locked in longer on the 30 year contract at a certain rate or?
Yes. And there, there are nuances and rules. The current, I think we should probably have a session about the changes between the two contracts going in. The new contract, it's going to be much more protective of the wholesale customers. Right now, we're locked into buying the minimum quantity of water every month. That goes away in the new agreements. However, there's nuances. We're not just going to provide the water we need in the summer. So, but.
So when do those get locked in? Like, you know, because, you know, to Carl's question, I mean, sure, we're starting to get a better idea of what their overall plan is going to cost. But we don't, it's not completely locked in. Is there a certain point of our negotiation process with them where it's like, okay, so this I mean, but so here's the 30 year agreement that we're, whatever it is.
The agreement has been in process.
Yeah.
And FCS is within this groups and these newest numbers that we have. FCS Portland authorized FCS during special version, looking at different scenarios for Sandy under the new agreement. So we could compare apples to apples. One of the main differences, I don't need to jump ahead, is that we have a much more refined estimate of how much water we need to take from Portland to supplement our sources.
Yeah.
Where the what we looked at last summer was a much more staggered, like one NGV, two NGV. If we reinvest in all of our sandy water that we get from free essentially from Alder Creek, Brownell Springs, we can, we can minimize what we take. And that becomes very cost effective for us. We're basically building pipeline for emergency and groundwater access. But we want to keep that water that can take, because it is expensive.
I guess where I'm going with it, that those, they're crazy over there. Like I don't like the idea of doing business with them at all. They're the kind of folks that go down a path and then they come back and say, we didn't estimate for the pipes in the ground, you know? Right? So when you're dealing with something like that, where I get concerned is, is what happens the next time we didn't, we did, you know, factor in the pipes in the ground. And where are we locked in with our, you know, negotiation with them when they then turn around and try to recharge everybody to, you know, recoup some of that money? You know, where just when are we going to be locked in with their changing cost factors for what they're going to want to charge us as somebody they supply to?
A lot of these details are still in negotiations. And so there's a certain amount of sharing that will just be shared among everyone depending on what's needed. But also dependent on, dependent on whether it benefits one customer versus. So I think, from recollection, they do want to get these costs locked. I mean, this, the details of this agreement locked up, I think, within the next year. They have a draft agreement coming that needs to be finalized. And I would like to pull in one of the principles at Murray Smith that spoke to us previously actually was a public works director and a wholesale customer. He understands and was a big force for the redevelopment of this new agreement that is more protective of the wholesale customers compared to the older agreement.
I mean, we're getting closer.
I think, I mean, the core question is, are the rates locked in with like an escalation each year inflation figure, right? So if we pay, you know, a dollar per gallon, is that?
Portions are, and then portions depend on capital costs that come in. So it's nuanced and it's in the, I do think it would be worthwhile to have like a deeper look at those and we could identify more of the risks. They are at 90% design. Or they're locked in and they Portland does have a lot of money, especially from a lot of the SDC growth. But they are also facing rate pressure and they do not want to increase their rates more than 3%. And that has really held them back based on doing things and I know at least from the wastewater side, they did want them to be more efficient in their processes. So that's why they developed the project management office. So I do think you are going to see more more fiscal pressure.
I know we've talked about this before, but we're not going to start building pipe out there until we know it's going there.
You mean infiltration?
Yeah.
And we would, I mean, there's a number of steps that have to happen. We need to post the master plan. We need to program manager on board. We need to apply for money. We need to put the RFP out to hire a engineer. So we're going to know whether or not it passes land. For them for sure. And
Doing land use.
Our, really, our first priority is we need to rebuild Alder Creek and get it
Yeah.
Be strong again, because that's the heart of our production.
Okay. I didn't mean to just.
No.
Later on the agenda.
Yeah.
That'd be more appropriate to have some of those detailed questions.
Yeah, those are great questions and should have had you come up to the mic. Sorry, Jenny. But yeah, and we would, we would go for land use after Portland's land use process too. So we would know. Jenny touched on this, just to repeat that this is a preliminary rate model. We're going to come back on the 21st, probably be similar to this. But this is, this is a kind of the first shot with what we know today of the construction cost for this project. This slate of projects and it assumes an escalation factor, I think of six per year construction cost and an additional 35% contingency. We're starting very conservative like we do with wastewater. As we get better information, those out years, at least on the wastewater side came down. And we would hope for the same sort of trajectory on this, especially when you add in things like with you grants and forgivable loans and things like that into our funding plans. This just assumes a half being funded by revenue bond and by SRF. So a lot of work that still can be done on the financing and funding side to drive these down. But by starting off with a, you know, $10 to $15 increase for the average customer gets us in the position with a healthier fund balance and a position to go out and get those. um with a healthier fund balance and a position to go out and get those loans and grants to have the debt coverage uh to start the project and start the engineering and start construction uh to meet this, these tight deadlines that we have for, for finishing uh the work by two thousand twenty-seven.
Jordan, when we did the rate increases for the wastewater model, we looked at collecting dollars early on in the process, so that when we got done road, and even though we may be collecting more than we should have, it was a way to keep from overwhelming our rate payers. And I'm wondering why we're not doing that this time in twenty-two, we're only doing an eight percent, but twenty-three through about twenty-six. It's like we've got about a hundred and fifty plus rate increase percentages. Is, is there a rationale for waiting until the end result or rather than?
Eight percent is what went in, what was implemented last year. So that's uh July of twenty-one. That's supposed to be your twenty-one, twenty-two.
Okay, that's the existing, that's not.
Part of the problem was we were working on this master plan. Getting the numbers on what it would cost for the treatment plan or filtration. So we kinda had to wait until we got better information before proposing something that, you know, we could back with, with numbers. Um policy option here, I think, like you do with wastewater is you can, you know, front load. You know, and do a higher rate increase and kind of pull the Band-Aid and then do smaller rate increases. But, you know, we're also trying to be sensitive to the fact that there's other rate increases. You know, uh with wastewater and other things too. On stormwater. Uh stormwater, uh we, we've talked recently about um this utility that is really a um I, I don't wanna call it neglected, but you know, it was, it was created as one of our newest utilities. Um that was created as a, a sort of a, a utility to help with the solution that we have uh for a certain uh parking lot that needed some um some help on, on handling the stormwater. A lot of cities in the metro area are, are part of uh, considered MS four. Um or they're regulated to handle their stormwater onsite and also by municipal uh systems. Uh we're not, um but that doesn't mean we don't have stormwater issues. Uh and the need to uh make more investments in how we treat stormwater runoff from roads and, and doing things like green streets and swales and things like that. Um the reason this was a part of our recent, uh a recent council meeting was a, a contract amendment to do a hundred and fifty thousand dollar um repair to a stormwater pipe under Tupper Park. Uh and the stormwater fund does not have any money, um because we haven't had needed it or haven't had to kind of think about this as a, as a utility that we need to plan for. Uh build capital dollars for, come up with a master plan and a CIP. So what we're proposing is um, starting off with some modest increases, three dollars and fifty cents is I think one of the lowest fees I can find for a city, um especially in the, in Clackamas County or in the metro area for stormwater. Um but a dollar fifty will raise at least another hundred thousand dollars that can help us start building that uh those funds for future capital or um completing the master plan in a couple of years after we get through uh the water and wa, a lot of the water and wastewater planning and, and construction work. Um and then we can be more deliberate, deliberate about um our stormwater, you know, pipes and, and uh facilities that we have out there and even investing in additional stormwater um capital that can help kind of with these other problems that we're dealing with, like INI stuff. Um and then as part of it, you know, looking at the future, we'd probably wanna start ramping this up. You know, with small increases each year to kind of keep up with inflation and construction costs and, and build some funds and do a master plan in the future.
I mean, a hundred and sixteen thousand doesn't seem like a whole lot of money.
Yeah, at the time, and the council's like, find the money. Um and this will help, I think, pay, you know, cause well, if this goes into effect in July, that's, you know, half of it will be collected next this little year.
But is this enough to be, to be, you know, responsible, right? No, probably not. On the other hand, I'm a little concerned about the huge, large uh business that we've got stormwater. And now we've got drinking water, we've got sewer water and talking STCs. This whole package is starting to, yeah, be a big thing for people who have to sit there and write the check every month. The city of Sandy, so I, I agree with Don that this is really small potatoes when it comes to stormwater. There's a lot of things that need to be done with our stormwater. But I really am concerned about the big picture, where that all fits. And hopefully we'll be doing that conversation, right? Talking about how all this will affect our rate base.
Residential units, twenty-seven hundred and fifty square feet of pervious surface, impervious surface.
The average person, resident, you'd see if the.
Uh the average home in Sandy is three fifty per month.
Oh, so, so. Really think, yeah, yeah, this is nothing. I, I really.
With everything else.
I get it.
You know.
Somebody who's using per gallon is much different than doubling something that's a per square foot.
Sure, totally. But I think to Carl's point, and I have got my own concerns that, you know, this entire package is, is it massive increases straight across the board, right? For people who, I'm starting to watch people sell things so they can put gas in their car.
Yeah.
So it's concerning to me that, that we're looking at really very large rate increases. And I realize that on a scale, they're not large, right? In that some of this, but for a lot of our population has a fixed income.
Exactly.
And so they only have what they have. They don't have more than that. And for a lot of them, they can't go get more. You know, so, so I am concerned because we do have a large number of people who are starting to sell things on the community pages to put gas in their cars, food on the table, and it's, 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 you know.
So the downside, if we can have a discussion for just a second, so that the, the downside is if we don't do it, then a few years from now, we're looking at a stormwater problem. It's like a wastewater, a freshwater. And so we, we have to do it. The question, I mean, will a year make a difference?
Sure.
So, and, and, I mean.
So, so, I mean, yes, I mean, and, and that's what you're up against, right? I mean, what you're up against is, is the big wastewater deal. We talk about not raising STCs for a while, not raising rates. Well, why were we not raising rates straight at that time? Well, we had the two thousand eight economic downturn, you know, that came in and happened. Then all of a sudden, we started getting into wanting to do rate increase, and we had COVID that ended up, you know, coming in and happening. Now we've got these other factors. My only point there is, is there's always something happening in the world. And, and I told, cause, and Lori, I'm, you know, I, I hear everything you're talking about there. I feel those things. Um but you know, you know, to Don's point though, right? Like, if, if, if you, if you let every factor that's going on and not, what you just listed is not every factor. These are major.
It's major, and, and I'll tell you, I'll tell you that my perspective is different than yours, because I'm in these houses.
Yeah, that's right.
I'm in them.
Yeah, that's right.
So.
Yeah.
For a lot of people, it's very stressful.
Yeah.
It's very stressful.
Yeah.
This for, for most of us, not a big deal.
Right.
And I'm not arguing that it doesn't need to be done. That's not what I'm saying. What I'm saying is, for a lot of people, we're getting into a world that's very scary.
Yep, I know, I know, I know. I, we are, we're headed there, but we don't run a deficit. We can't. We can't let our assets deter it. So what we can do is be much more careful about where we spend, make sure we're spending on the right stuff.
Well, I also wanna make sure that we're looking for other avenues, right? Because my concern becomes we increase rates, and I'm not saying that we're gonna do this. I'm, I'm just having a general conversation here. But my concern becomes, we increase rates, and it's just like anything, right? If, if I get a raise, I take that raise and I spend that money, right? That's what we do. That's human nature. So I wanna make sure that, that we're looking for other avenues of money, because a lot of times if things are covered, then you don't look for other avenues, right? You don't look for other ways to creatively pay for things. So we're still a small community, so not a lot of people. Lot of big projects, lot of things that have to be paid for. I wanna make sure that as a governing body, that we're making the best decisions and looking at the full picture and not just one piece.
Well, I think also, you know, I, I understand your perspective, because it's one that probably most of us don't see. I also hope that we have the ability to find the, you know, we do give some breaks to some folks you know, that need it and, and kind of making, making those available to the folks who need it is probably really important. You know, from, from where I'm sitting, I kind of see that as kind of compromised to try to address that issue that we have while still for the folks that can, you know, afford it and stuff. Make sure that we've got the investment in our facilities that we need to not get into the situation we found ourselves in by not, you know, by always being so cautious for, you know, things, because there's always something, as you said.
There's a smart way to, and maybe not so smart way about going to ballot office, and I'm all, all the detail, but in, in my mind, rate payers, rates are for people who are current users. STCs are for our future. People who buy the house, right? They're the ones that are paying the big dollars on that STCs. So there's two sets of people there. Also, other things like, uh, you really want some tax income. You want commercial. Commercial building will pay a far bigger percentage of what you have compared to that house that's coming in. And there may be a lot more houses than they are commercial, but that may be one of the things we should be thinking about as we deny or accept certain projects going through this list. Maybe a commercial project would be the better business to say yes to, and maybe something else that you know to.
All right.
One other question. On, could you go back on that previous one with the? Was it stormwater?
Water or stormwater?
You know, where it was like forty percent that was, yeah, sorry to take too. So my question is, is that, are we saying that? Are you asking, I mean, is this discussion or what's gonna come up, you know, in the future, are you asking us to support a forty-one percent increase every year in twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six?
Just for the first year. Um we would love to have that kind of certainty, to have the council adopt rates on a three to five year basis. We like to show in a rate model where, where we're projecting in the future, because you know, that kind of gives you a sense of what the direction we're going, but.
Okay, but the other half of that question was also like, okay, once we get all these investments made, and I get that we need to kind of keep saving, you know, collecting some money so that we don't get the big backlog of deferred maintenance uh to pay for. So do we have a rate reduction in the future, once we kind of get the money collected to pay for the deferred maintenance that we're planning to do? Is there a defer?
Far in the future. Um rates, and the reason being is that the rates um cover amount of debt service.
That.
Yeah. The debt coverage ratio and the fund balance minimums. And yeah, when, when we pay off the loans and bonds, maybe. And if you don't have system reinvestment, that costs the same amount. But there's, you know, thirty years from now, there's gonna be things that have to be replaced.
The answer is no.
Sorry to.
We just paid off the loan for the.
Eighteen years early.
Thank you, sorry.
All right.
A couple more utilities to, to come through. I, I did jump ahead to, since the conversation with this route. Um the, kind of the average bill and, and based on these projections for water. The proposed rate increases, um it's about twenty dollars for the average residential customer that uses about seven CCF on average throughout the year. Closer to about five during the winter and higher in the summer, but you know, Sandy's kind of, we've talked about the uniqueness of Sandy in many ways. We're a full-service city that provides all these utilities. So a lot of these communities that we, we look at comparisons in, in the Clackamas, in Clackamas County have um may have special districts or utility districts, and so the bills don't always come with the, the city logo on them. Um uh or they uh, you know, have taxing districts or something like that, so um uh for our case, we, we have uh both, you know, the water sewer on a, the utility bill plus um a small stormwater, but we also.
Wastewater or water here? This is. All combined, alright.
But if you look at the size of those towns versus the size of Sandy population-wise, there's a pretty significant difference.
No, but I'm, I'm comparing it to, I remember when we were first going through wastewater a couple of years ago, and we were lumped down with Gladstone and Estacada down the far left, and now all of our water is starting to get a lot more in line with all the other communities. But God, even Estacada's water is like right up there now.
Well, everybody's got the same problem.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah, and this reflects our proposed, it doesn't reflect.
Oh, this is even with our proposed. So like, what, I mean, we're still like, I mean, we're among the lowest.
We're creeping up there.
I mean, we're, yeah, I mean, we're, yeah, but this is what's projected.
There's Sandy and Sandy proposed.
Yeah, and there's.
I like the spin, we're amongst the lowest.
One, two, three, four, five.
Yeah, but everybody's going through this. This is always changing.
Well, yes, but in the same token, you have to look at the size of those communities. Canby's fifty thousand people.
Yep.
Sandy's twelve. Canby's twenty, sorry.
Business kind of, you know, the multiplier, the thing that drives the cost. It's people and businesses, right?
But. I guess you're just comparing it to what residents are paying. You don't care if they're paying it to the county water services or to the.
Right, yeah.
Happy Valley doesn't.
Exactly.
Right, right. Service districts.
Right.
But we know that some of these other towns, like Estacada, are gonna be going through this, we've heard already, sewer stuff. We just started our sewer stuff a couple of years before they did. Oh, is it just an example?
And this is rates as of today, so if they are proposing a rate increase at the start of the new fiscal year, that's not reflected in those communities as well.
A horse race, that's what it is.
No, it's, it's our turn, you know. Yeah, there is something about bigger cities have more rate payers to pay into the system. They also have more facilities to maintain, right? So.
And there's been.
It's just easy to get lost. There's been some interesting stuff going on over at DEQ as well.
Yeah.
Alright, so back up for a second to talk about Sandy, and as Greg just left the room, but.
He'll be back momentarily, I'm sure. Um part of this, you know, area of the, of the utility bill is very similar to what Jordan just talked about. Uh rising costs, lead times, inflation. Um, you know, not just for the, the upfront things that you think about, like modems and things like that, but all the behind the scenes equipment and construction that has to be um maintained within the SandyNet service. And so we are, well, uh Greg and his team presented to the um SandyNet Advisory Board about two months ago, I think it was, a modest rate increase for the existing three hundred megabyte plan. Um that is also coupled with increasing the, the speed there from three hundred to five hundred. Um and so that's a three dollar increase. It's being proposed from forty-one ninety-five to forty-four ninety-five uh for those residential and commercial customers. Part of this um change in Zania is also adding two new tiers of service. So a two gig and a five gig plan. Um that would be available only for new construction and new development uh in the short term, but then long term as um more technology is switched out and rotated and, and newer stuff brought on board, we can begin offering those services to um other areas of the city as well. And those rate uh charges, excuse me, for those rates would be a hundred and ten dollars per month for the two gigabyte plan and five and two hundred and twenty-five dollars for the five gigabyte plan. Um we've seen, especially since the onset of the pandemic, a lot of the three hundred megabyte customers transitioning over to the gig service. That may continue to happen, may not. Um right now, it's about twenty-five percent of the uh existing customers on uh gig service with the other seventy-five percent on um the three hundred, which will be increased, as I said, to five hundred. Um when this pricing uh increase goes into effect. And that rate increase would generate about ninety thousand dollars in additional revenue um next fiscal year, which will help continue to pay for the rising cost of the equipment that needs to be ordered and switched out and implemented. And I realize, yeah, sorry, too many monitors.
Some of those stay at one gig because they don't have the equipment. What do they get charged?
Uh no changes to the one gig service. That would still say it at fifty-nine ninety-five.
What?
I jumped in, Greg, and talked about your service structure.
There's no rate, there's no increased costs affecting providing, continue to provide that service.
Not as much as it would be for the, the three hundred or the soon be five hundred hopefully plan, because the um it already has, has that profit built into it where there is uh the cost is, it's the same equipment currently as a three hundred. So we would be working up towards something in the future, but, uh, at this point. The not adjusted gig plan has been a goal towards pushing more people to the game by keeping it at that price.
Um, if I call, if I'm a new resident to Sandy, I call Wave and I want Wave to come out and hook me up some internet. How long am I waiting?
Depends if it's construction or not, sometimes they put it up in a week or two, sometimes it takes up within a month.
But my understanding is it's a month with us. But so now I'm a new resident and I call Sandy and how long has it taken for you to come out?
It depends on the amount of construction involved. Some houses like Randiv Construction are typically ready within a week.
Yeah, and so I guess my, uh, where I'm going with that is, it's like, it's, you know, I love being less money than than Wave and. And I am all about the internet, it's an essential service, but I do to a certain degree put this to the side a little bit of water and wastewater and everything. And to me, I'm like, I think like you, you need to always be balancing like people's access to the internet. With like service levels, right? Like, do we have the adequate staff to get out there and? And get somebody hooked up and online, you know, in a reasonable, you know, amount of time. And so I guess. My question is, does do these increases start to get you and your team, you know, to where you feel like we're meeting service levels where they should be at and stuff? Or are we not raising the rate to the point that starts to get you and your team, you know, to where you feel like would be adequate?
I think that the the current rates, uh, gets us to a point, uh, to satisfy this current budget level here. I think that we should be looking at.
Cause you're still twenty dollars a month less than the way, right? I I mean, so I mean, there's no reason why our guys aren't getting hooked up in a week and a half. Well, I I'm just saying, you know, we have room, you know, you know, like we we have, and I want to be ca- you know, cautious of of. You know, price points and everything else, and I'm not just trying to drive us towards some outrageous rate. And then the minute somebody wants their internet, they get it. I just, you know, there seems to be some. Balance there.
Yes, and I think it would really be beneficial during. Put that in there, uh, what are our core values and what are we driving towards?
Yeah, totally.
I'll speak up for Greg too. I mean. There, we could always use more staff in every department, but, um, there's a few departments, utilities, Sandy Net that are lagging behind.
Well, Chief keeps hiring us, guys.
Yeah, right, right. Well, we'll talk about that too, but. At least for standing at, you're competing with this value of trying to keep rates low because we're not trying to cover a profit. Um, we're trying to cover a cost of the installation of the the whole system, uh, trying to keep, you know, rates low for municipal funded utility. But the same point, we've been widely successful, which means much more fiber to maintain, many more customers. Um, and so, you know, in terms of customer, this customer service to our existing customers and our future customers, we could definitely use more staff on the construction side. Um, on the customer customer service side for answering calls and troubleshooting. Um, and then, you know, interest of mine is just helping Greg, um, with, you know, more of the administrative and. Uh, the the technical knowledge and the ability to fill in, you know, when someone's on vacation or out. Um, that that to me, the reliability factor is important. Um, it's an essential service at this point, right? Internet. We should treat it that way.
I have one coming on that too, is that. You know, you're in the bunker building where you're not really paying any rent and. I, you know, I would, you don't even have any hot water in there, and so, you know, the idea that we actually have a Sandy Net, you know. Place for you, you know, my preferences over my public works or headquarters or whatever. Um, where you have your room and you all your equipment and have, you know, office spaces for your staff and all those other things. These rates need to accommodate those kind of, you know, normal type. Office settings and stuff, because what you've got right now, you know, is not anything, you know, you're not paying rent, it's it's a dilapidated building, you don't have. You know, you just don't have a lot of stuff and we need to kind of get you guys up to. More accommodations. I think that's just really important, kind of to be, to making sure these prices can accommodate those kind of. Uh, you know, regular office.
Yeah, it looks the coolest.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, those are all valid points, and I think as Greg mentioned, there will be future races that will. Come up, you know, this helps resolve the immediate need of increased costs on the day-to-day side of equipment and what they're, you know, really up against right now and. Uh, going into the next budget cycle, so. What's that? Eight months from now when we start talking about that, there will probably be a larger conversation about the future of Sandy Net and what that looks like.
Mass, I mean, my thing is master plan, so they'll take both the operations and. Facility needs into.
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, no, don't you hear?
Yeah, so I just wanted to throw an, my, you know, on rates for sending it. I think with anything in that five hundred and up category, we should be positioned slightly below whatever is out there and available. So that we have a price point advantage. I I am worried about, I don't know that. Internet is essential to a lot of folks, but gigabyte is not, right?
So it's an interesting nuance.
Right, so three hundred might be a nice entry point at a low dollar volume that doesn't go up too much that we make for those very cost. Conscious people, but then as they opt in to higher levels of service. I would, I would support a much more steep increase in costs or to go up there. So we can kind of balance the needs between fixed income and you can still stream a movie at three hundred.
Uh, we had three hundred meg, we actually increased, uh, the speed higher than three hundred mags to add a little bit of upper room. Uh, for those around speed tests and that are heavy users and when we immediately did so, we saw a jump in traffic overall. So there are people actually capping out off the three hundred meg plan that took advantage of even slight increase.
Is there a lot of debate around that? You know what I mean?
So there there's a lot, there's a, I can speak on two hours of of this, but you gotta remember, uh, this is one area where. There is competition, um, even then we talked about that with, uh, one of the, uh, incumbents. Uh, we have two incumbents and they're actually the ones coming in, uh, now, uh, just bought out and they're investing in fiber as well and are in Sandy as well. And so, and their rates are there, and so, uh, we look at that, um, you know, that that jump, we've talked about this for many years of having. That that gig service there, trying to, you know, more people, you raise it up, they say, oh, it's not much more, we'll go to that, which is a lot more, you know. But we, uh. Added into there, which he mentioned, where we have three hundred customers now on gig, uh, service of it somewhere around there, uh, which is more. So it's kind of enticing to go that direction, um, of that, uh, part of it. Um, the idea from three to five, you know, just like, okay, we have the ability, it doesn't cost much at all. Uh, to, uh, for us, it's negligible on the going up to the higher speeds to five hundred. But when raising the rates, just like we had done before, moving it up there just so that, you know. You you see, I'm paying a little more, but I'm getting a little something more to it, right? Um, for that, you know, years ago, when we looked at raising the rates and we didn't one cycle, Joe was processing through going. Figuring out how many people would we lose off of by doing the the rate increase at that time? Because it is a competitive in that area, uh, noticing that we were better off not raising it because we, the the. Projection was that we would lose enough customers where we'd go backwards a little bit. One thing to remember is, yeah, we do have to replenish some of our stuff, but we have a, uh. You know, once we pay off our our bond as well for that, we have some big payments that are coming up. Uh, then, you know, it's only, it's a twenty-year bond cycle or municipal bond. Revenue bond, I'm sorry, then, uh, that would be back into the to the systems as well for reinvesting as well, so. Uh, there is that piece of it, but it's a, I I think they're they're fair rates, uh, some of the rates. Uh, or incumbents, uh, not the cable comment, that the telephone comment, you know, is. Is right there aligned with, you know, what the pricing is that we're putting out there. In fact, I think we may be now, this would take us a little bit above what they may be for the low plan. So anyways, just in that, just to make in perspective, there's another formula that we have to think about besides just the, uh, when you're the monopoly. I will add one thing to, uh, I can't remember now which comes in the first, I brought this up, but we have explored and talked about totally. Either a reduced rate for water, similar to what we do for wastewater. Um, as well as exploring especially in those rate, in those, uh, neighborhoods that were expanding fiber to with the ARPA funds that are, you know, typically more low income. Can we offer something that's a little bit maybe a slower speed but a lesser rate to, you know, make sure that access is available for those? So we don't have all of those intricacies, you know, pinned down yet, but that is something that we're exploring at the staff level and trying to figure out what the best recommendation would be to bring back to.
We need to get them ready, go out, start servicing grants pass, right, Kathleen? All right, that sounds good, exciting times for Sandy.
Uh, all right, so let's. Through building and planning fees are up next, so. Uh, this shouldn't be too much of a, um, shock on the planning side. The last few years, we've been trying to increase planning fees annually. Tied it to at least two percent of CPI, um, this year, you know, not much is different there. Kelly and his team have. Looked at, um, all the other cities within Clackamas County and evaluated our planning and building fees compared to their planning and building fees. I'm sure some of you aren't surprised to see that we were a little bit low in some areas compared to our neighboring communities, and so really the intent here is just. Increasing fees to help cover the actual cost of the service that we provide in both the planning and building divisions. Um, planning division, you know, fortunately has some general fund revenue that helps offset the cost of management during that. Department, but the building division is completely self-reliant, so ensuring that our fees are able to sustain personnel costs and, you know, other. Uh, that costs associated with offering that service and to make sure that we continue to raise rates, so we're not taking ourselves into a hole. Also, you know, with these two, um, departments. We really want to make sure they have healthy contingencies to weather any sort of economic downturn in the future. Uh, because, you know, just because we're in a recession doesn't mean the need for planning services stop, right? You still have maybe a comp plan that you're working on and. That is, or, um, you know, other planning endeavors that our planning staff take on, uh, and on the building side. Even without new construction, you still have, uh, modifications that are made to existing homes and, you know, building inspections that need to take place. And so those services, just because of a recession, don't go away, so we need to make sure there's some healthy contingencies there, so they can continue to. Stay on, um, no matter what sort of economic climate that we're in.
And we're considering comp plan, things we're gonna pay for comp plan for, uh, clear, the clear objective studies. All those things are all kind of worked into this a little bit.
Top plan was, uh, almost entirely funded through general fund revenue, uh, during this budget cycle. Um, not sure where we've settled.
So planning, planning receives general revenue every plan, yeah, and. You can argue that that's both a subsidy of planning activities, but also that we usually have some level of long-range planning that's going on. So if it isn't clear and objective code reviews, it could be additional attorney fees, or it could be other consultants doing, you know, um, assisting us with. Uh, the downtown walkability study or Pleasant Street master plan or something like that, uh, TSP, et cetera. And so those activities typically aren't funded by permits, right?
Just more cost recovery type stuff.
This is, yeah, yeah, so. Specifically looking at stuff that takes a lot of time for us, um, and. Costs us money in that regard of not getting enough cost recovery from the time spent.
Yeah, so you can see here, um, a forty lot, forty-one lot subdivision, uh, the increase would, um. You know, be just under four thousand dollars, um, for a type three review, um. Two thousand dollars in an increase on the type two, so. You're just, every little bit helps offset those increased costs that we see on a daily basis as far as salaries and, um. Uh, benefits. And you can see on the building side, those increases that we're doing, um. Don't have a huge overall impact, uh, we have a sample building permit raises that, um, for the average home about seven hundred and twelve dollars. So it's not some huge number that's going to, you know, negatively impact growth by any means. The larger driver on this slide is the SDC charges that are on the initial building permit. Um, we talked a little bit about SDCs tonight, so we'll talk about those, you know, more again in the future.
Yeah, so. I'm just gonna make a statement, this bothers me that we're at the low end of the spectrum. To be totally honest, um, you know, the, and and I want to add the rate water increase, so that's a fifty-three percent. Increase, I think I should, let me take that back, I had it right here. Yeah, almost fifty-four percent increase. This isn't, and I I'm not saying we got to increase this by fifty-four percent, but this isn't anywhere near where our current citizens are paying for for rate. And. We're asking a lot of our current people, and to me, just what you said, when you're getting general revenues, that's a subsidy. Like, uh, I mean, if we looked at this as a business model, this would be a simple business. And and I I'm just not really for that. Um, I'd like to see these numbers move up. We're below us, we're the lowest. And I just, uh, you know, one of these cities on here, I happen to know is growing, two of them. Are growing extremely rapidly, one of them's the fastest in the state and it's the third highest. So.
It's also super expensive to live there, right? So that's got to be part of the balance as well, because these still, they they, all these fees are getting passed on to the future buyer. So when we talk about how much it costs to get into a new home, you know.
It's not a hundred, it's not a hundred percent more.
Well, well, yeah, I mean, right, a hundred percent, like, it needs to be adjusted, but the same prime, I think. And this isn't us, I I I'm talking more broadly here. I just, I get, I get a little agitated hearing, you know, local government officials, again, not us. I hear this all over the state, talking about housing affordability. Well, here, when we do have some control over housing affordability, not as much as people like to think that we do even close, right?
Developer comes in and tells you that the the house is going to be in the four hundreds and now they're starting the sixes. That's, that's, that, that's just, it's gonna be market driven. This, this right here is a drop in the bucket when it compares to it, but it has a substantial effect on our business.
That's right.
I was talking earlier about.
Well, because shouldn't they be comparable, right? If we're, if we're looking at, like, we're, we're looking at with our proposed rates, that we're going to be in the fifth, sixth highest. Right, then shouldn't the SDC rates mark match that somehow?
The four thousand, six thousand dollars difference between what used to be and what it will be in the future. Doesn't really make that much difference in terms of a developer coming in and being able to pay for those fees. What really kills them, what really is the problem is, and that's where we're in now, is the time it takes to go from application. To digging the ditches and putting utilities in. There's a bunch of things that happen, risk between now and two years from now, three years from now, when that shovel starts to be applicable. So from my mind, a little bit more money is very small impact on the developer. Until you start putting on more people that you can respond to. So right now, there's a lot of fears about recession. Big thing coming up, I hear everybody talking about. Two years on from today's application until the time you can put a shovel in the ground, there is a real strong possibility there'll be a. Recession or maybe a depression between now and two years from now. That's slowing people down, that's taking them. I don't know if I want to take that risk, so if you can put on more people, make that turnaround time faster. And you look at more of those projects and more in-depth, you have a response that people would prefer to have. And they make more money for us, and we're we're us skeleton levels with our planning department.
But when I hear from developers about the length of time and the risk in the city of Sandy, I don't hear a lot about our staff, but I hear a lot about our council.
So I I feel like on multiple occasions, the council's given direction that we should be driving these fees up to the maximum amount possible. We've been saying several small.
No, but Carl, you have though, I've heard. Yeah.
We we said small, but many.
No, no, I can agree, but I'm talking in recent years, you've anecdotally said. Being in real estate, I've talked to a bunch of developers who say that we're really giving it away on. That's where I'm going, sorry.
The question part of this is, are these as high as we can justify? Have we taken that most liberal view of what could be included in the rate models to come up with this? Or is this just the opposite extreme, kind of a conservative, what does it take to keep going the way we've always been doing?
So just to clarify, and Kelly can jump in on the the actual bit, um, fee comparison here, but. So this this chart that you're looking at here, the big thing that. That you guys are speaking about are SDCs, and that's the distinction here, is Happy Valley, like a Swiga, what's simple, they have. That you guys are speaking about are SDCs, and that's the distinction here. This Happy Valley, like a Swigaw, Wilsonville, they have much higher SDCs than we have. So this is really showing the comparison of everything all in of what it costs, including SDCs. But then the distinction of like, getting down to when you just pull up structural or plumbing permit from the city of Sandy, how much more of those fees going up? And that's a comparison, you know, of the, where we're at between the two greens on, on the left. On the horizon, as we talked about earlier in this meeting, is we are coming to you with proposed SDC increases. There's one tonight that's gonna be presented. Um, that will be a future adoption for parks. Some of these cities have very high parks SDCs. Water will be up next, transportation's in the future. So you will see Sandy climbing this chart, this chart as we implement the, the updated SDC and methodology.
I guess in the questions, what's in the proposed?
Yeah, what's proposed, what's, where are we, where are we?
Park SDC not in the proposed?
This is just look, well, Kelly, I saw you're unmuted. Do you want to jump in or do you want me to elaborate for a minute?
Oh, go ahead.
Uh, so this is, you know, just generally speaking, structural building permit fee, um zoning administration fee, erosion control permit. Uh, all of your, you know, outlets, bath fixtures, all those things that are, you know, fifteen dollars per thing. This is incrementally increasing to be in line with the neighboring communities that we have. So. Kelly, I think, you know, the short answer is that this gets you to generating additional revenue. Uh, more financial sustainability long-term and being in line with all of the neighboring communities uh is on the low end on the administrative permit side.
For example.
The one thing I was gonna highlight is, what, what did you say the increased amount was? Tyler was like seven hundred and something dollars?
Seven hundred and twelve dollars on this.
So that's seven hundred and twelve dollars is just for my department. Like Jordan just said, once you increase the parks SDCs, the parks fee and lieu, water, sewer, any other SDCs, transportation, once we get the TSP done. The, this is going to start to, it's gonna definitely pass Milwaukee and it's probably gonna be going towards more between Milwaukee and Lake Oswego. So, yeah, thi- this chart's only showing the increases for my division or my department. It's not showing. The fee increases that you'll probably be looking to tackle in the next, you know, one to twelve months um that are all related to SDCs, which are the majority of what you see on this chart as well for all the cities.
I'd like to see what Gresham is, because, yeah, Wilsonville's a long ways from Sandy, but Gresham's just down the street and they're our neighbor. So it's interesting to always show Gresham.
So in say, in saying all that, the only other thing I would like to highlight is we can always definitely increase them more. The um, especially with the uncertainty of economy and how that kind of, we rely on a good economy um to kind of get our. Contingencies higher, especially with the building division, since we don't get any general fund revenue from taxes. Um, in saying that, the changes that we're proposing for planning specifically, and even for building to some extent, is more geared towards new development. And so the increases that you'll, you're seeing are um. Keeping the rates closer to what they already are for existing residents when they're trying to do a small additions or remodels or a tree removal in their backyard. The changes really are geared towards the develop, the development community and larger things like subdivisions, apartment complexes, things like that. So I just want to make that clear.
That's what should be, it should be.
Alright. Alright, last two, I believe, um, records request fee. So annually, we increase um, or we propose an increase to our records request fee to more closely match the hourly rate of the staff that are completing the records requests. And so we currently have two tiers um for those rates and proposing increasing the administrative staff fee to fifty dollars per hour and eighty dollars per hour for the executive um staff fee. That's like a department head level um person that falls into that category. And again, this is just really a cost recovery um area here. And then.
Is that include Foya type things?
Yeah. Yep.
So you said that it approaches, um, what would it equal? You want to pay for those.
Wait, it closely mirrors, the average cost might be forty-nine seventy-three, so I put fifty here, right, then, trying to get away from these. I know, I, it more closely matches a, you know, uh, a, a range of what that cost is. Um, and then as far as interest rates go, the current language in our fee schedule says that it's uh, for any monies owed to the city, it's based on current long-term yields. Not proposing changing that, but proposing adding one percent to current long-term yields to help offset the staff time it takes to manage those receivables. Um, right now, we're breaking even because we're not having that money invested earning interest. I would like to help cover the staff time it takes to bill them monthly, send late notices. Um, you know, receipt payments, all the associated audit requirements that come when monies is owed, monies are owed to the city. Um, so it's not really a money grab. It's again, a, a, a tool to help cover the costs that me and my staff uh are burning with, with.
Is this like for individuals? Are we talking corporations and that kind of, so there's a big change coming in the next few years with our interest rates on the retail side.
Yeah, so this is really geared towards um. If you, let's say. We, we try not to do super specific with this example. Um, if we do something for you on behalf of a, a property owner, I'm gonna make up a scenario. We uh replaced your water meter. It's your cost, but we're gonna replace your water meter because it broke and you're a low-income individual and we're trying to throw your bone and setting you up on a payment plan to pay that back. And then you don't pay us back. I lean the property and I charge interest. This is what that's geared towards.
It is individual, but it's like sidewalks are some that way too, right?
Yeah. Okay. Um, another area where this would potentially come into play is like interfund loans, standing at, you know, has had some of those in the past. We've always tied the interest rate to those interfund loans to what we could have had in investments. Um, but there's still a lot of administrative staff time that shows into managing those, you know, debt payments, compliance, et cetera. So this is really just helping capture those costs. Okay.
I think a lot has been said about these already uh tonight. Um, we have the parks SDCs and fee and lieu um presentation uh later this, this evening, and then that'll be coming back um for adoption. Um, with an implementation plan later this summer, a transportation SDCs, we're really, uh, we're waiting on the state of Oregon right now to kind of do this contract amendment so we can complete the TSP and take that through the final. Stage of public involvement and setting priorities um for the capital improvement plan and for the TSP. Uh, we want to bring back um an SDC increase uh to implement the, the TSP. But also account for the Bell three sixty-second and Gunnerson two eleven projects. It's kind of been hanging out there um and look at things like a reimbursement district as well of that project. And then.
For which one?
Uh, for uh Bell three sixty-second.
Right, because Gunnerson's already done.
Gunnerson's already in the works. Yeah, yeah. Um.
Can I ask you, but the two eleven project isn't done, right?
Well, that's, it's an intersection project.
Okay, but what, what are we, when do we have to start making all the improvements to two eleven?
ADA improvements have to be done by. Probably that same time frame, twenty twenty-six, twenty twenty-seven, I think.
So shouldn't we start looking at that as well?
One thing that comes up was that now that we own it, now that it's our highway. Where road, um, that the standards of what is needed there for turn lanes and stuff isn't as onerous as it was under ODOT. So we might have a little less money to spend.
Yeah, we have our traffic engineer firm uh starting that work right now. Or design and studying.
Or you can get around about, sure.
The police chief over there might be. Singing Elmo song with his ears closed, but.
Uh, I touched on the cost recovery uh in the recreation programming effort. Um, and Russell's gonna be doing that work with the consultant this summer um and looking at that. Uh, the other thing that we wanted to introduce, we're not proposing an increase um with this slate here, but something that I think we're gonna look hard at for the next biennium is the public safety fee. Um, I think per the ordinance, we look at it at each bu- budget cycle, but I think we want to do it a more intensive diet and if it needs to be adjusted. Since salaries and costs and everything have gone up and we've held that at four fifty, I think, since two thousand nineteen. So perhaps this biennium is kind of increase it just a little bit. Um, each biennium may be a strategy council wants to consider to kind of keep um, you know, that fee aligned with the costs of the, the new officers, the officers that were hired and associated equipment. I think that's, that's it. Um, I should have had a next step, but uh we'll be coming back with. A full slate of resolutions and public hearings on the twenty-first. We've advertised already in the Sandy Source. We'll keep advertising, get the notice out about um the proposed rate adjustments. The word out, out to our heavy users, too.
I have one ending statement. Uh, with dinner, we had a fortune cookie. And in my fortune cookie, it says, prepare today for the demands of tomorrow. I don't know where you got these fortune cookies.
Is the staff, are you manipulating council? Alright, we'll do that quick break and then we'll repeat. Let us call the Sandy City Council meeting to order. Uh, join me in the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hi, welcome everyone. Appreciate your attendance. Um, we always start with the review of tonight's uh meeting agenda. We uh call. Uh, for any changes to the agenda and then we go to public comment. Jeff, has there been any submitted either in person or online for tonight?
No, mayor, there is not.
Okay, uh, then uh we will go to our presentation, which I suspect a lot of you are here for, which we're looking forward to. It's the uh swearing in of our new officer. Um, then we'll go to our consent agenda for our May sixteenth meeting. Under ordinances, we do have two public hearings tonight, one for our parks code modifications. As well as a public hearing for a revised twenty twenty-two Parks and Trails master plan adoption. Under old business, we have the bowl uh run water uh supply decision reevaluation. And we have under new business park system development charges and fee in lieu update. We'll then go to our report from Jordan, our city manager, as well as our committee and council reports before we adjourn for this evening. But Jeff, will you call the roll?
Yes, Council Pete's here. Council Smallwood.
Here.
Council Sheldon.
Here.
Council Walker.
Here.
Council Exner.
President.
Council Hopkinson.
Here.
Mayor Pulliam.
Here. Um, any changes to tonight's agenda? Seeing none, uh, we'll move past public comments. It's then was submitted. Um, and go into our presentation, our police officer oath of office for Scott Jones.
Uh, Scott, please join me at Brad.
And that, Jeff, we're getting so good at that. Well, I can play these things.
So it's not real conducive for family to take photos. If anybody wants to come stand back here so you can get better view, you're welcome to.
I don't know where you want to stand a few more.
Still any picture? Alright, please raise your hand or repeat after me. I, Scott Jones, do solemnly swear.
I, Scott Jones, do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Oregon.
And the Constitution of the State of Oregon.
And the laws therefore.
And the laws therefore.
And I will faithfully, honestly, and impartially.
And I will faithfully, honestly, and impartially.
Discharge the duties of a police officer.
Discharge the duties of a police officer.
During my continuance therein.
During my continuance therein.
To the best of my ability.
The best of my ability.
So help me God. Congratulations. Officer Stanley, if you'd like to take time, take pictures, yeah, please help yourselves.
Can I line up for a good photo?
Yes.
Yeah, do that.
You guys want, want to come up here with him and we'll get your picture?
Hmm.
Thanks. Thank you. We really appreciate your service for our community. Appreciate.
Absolutely.
Thanks, John.
Thank you, mayor. Somebody's.
I cleared out the room here.
And the room.
And it's just us again.
FTCs and plans.
Alright, well, let's move forward to our consent agenda. We have our city council meeting minutes for May sixteenth.
Unless there's a discussion, I'll entertain a motion.
I think the motion we accept that.
Is there a second?
Second.
A motion by Council Sheldon, a second by Council Exner to adopt the city council meeting minutes for May sixteenth. Just to note that I will be abstaining since I was not here in attendance. Um, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose mays, I abstain. Alright. Um, alright, ordinances, public hearing, parks modification. And I will open this public hearing for ordinance twenty twenty-two ten here at seven thirty-four on June sixth. Uh, any abstentions from the hearing body? Any conflicts of interest? Alright, uh, seeing none, um, Kelly, would you like to provide the staff report?
Sure, thank mayor. So I'm gonna keep this very brief today. Um, we met on May sixteenth, just a couple of weeks ago. Um, and we discussed the proposed code amendments, the chapter seventeen thirty-two and seventeen eighty-six. Based on that conversation, we received feedback on five main items, which I listed under the key considerations and analysis section in the staff report before you tonight. Those modifications were then run by the city attorney's office and they added extra language to make them clear and objective and to make sure they're incorporated properly into the development code. And that is what is before you tonight with ordinance two thousand twenty-two ten. And with that, um, that summarizes the modifications that were made since May sixteenth. Let me discuss this last.
Alright, thank you, Kelly. With that, we'll move ahead into public testimony. Uh, please try to avoid repetition if someone else has already expressed the same thoughts. It is sufficient to state that you agree with the statements of a previous speaker, even if that's all you say. If you have materials that you wish to have considered by the city council as part of this hearing, please email your materials to recorder at ci.sandy.or.us and staff will make sure that your evidence is incorporated into the record. For those joining us in person this evening, please raise your hand at the appropriate time to indicate you would like to speak and wait to be recognized. If you're participating online, click the raised hand button at the appropriate time and wait to be recognized. If you're participating via telephone, dial star nine to raise your hand and wait to be recognized. I'm gonna call on each person when it is their turn to speak. Each participant will receive up to three minutes to testify. Jeff will let you know when you have twenty seconds remaining. Our city council rules require each person state your name and address for the record. I am now calling on any testimony on the proposed ordinance. Reminder, you'll be provided three minutes.
Hey, mayor, let's take a look for any raised hands online. And mayor, I do not see any raised hands.
Alright, Kelly, we're looking for that staff recap and recommendation after all that public testimony.
Um, yeah, I, I, I do think there's some urgency to adopt the ordinance before you tonight to make sure that we set the goalposts. Uh, that's the reason why it's being proposed as an emergency that, so that tomorrow, if I get any land use actions, that these new uh ordinance rules would apply at that point. Thank you.
Alright, sounds good. If there's questions for Kelly, now's the time. Otherwise, um, I'll look for a motion to close the public hearing.
Make a motion to close the public hearing?
Sir, a second, second, counselor. There is a motion by Counselor Pete's soul to close the uh public hearing, a second by Counselor Sheldon. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose mays, alright, public hearing is closed at seven thirty-seven here on June sixth. Discussion. And a lot of meetings and discussion about this.
I want just one question, and it's kind of.
I want just one question, it's kind of towards the very end of the code language, it's seventeen point one eight six point four zero. What that did was it requires, Kelly, do you want to kind of just explain what that does? The thing I sent you a little email on about the.
Sure. So you're talking about.
Seventeen point one eight six point four zero D and E. It basically says that for the fee in lieu of they only need to pay fifty percent of the fee in lieu of prior to a building permit.
Correct.
And I'm just wondering, do we do that with any other STCs?
We do not, however, the fee in lieu is a little bit different than other SDCs, so the parks SDC, we don't do that either. So the fee in lieu is the only thing we do in the city that I'm aware of. And the reason that I think it was instituted back around two thousand and ten, partially because of the downturn in the economy, but even more so because smaller developers, which I think this is what I said in my email too. Smaller developers were looking for ways to help them finance projects. And one of the ways was to offer a deferral. The benefit of the deferral for the city is that we do charge it at a slightly higher rate. So we do collect about an additional ten percent in fee in lieu when they do go through the deferral process. And so the larger developers like Lennar, VR, Horton, the national builders, I don't think, you know, they sometimes take advantage of it, but it is really for local smaller developers that are doing, you know, say fifteen to twenty lot subdivisions that are looking to help finance the project, then they can defer some of the cost to the building permit stage when they're actually getting some of their capital back with the sales of lots, so that's why it was implemented.
All right, with that, I will call for the first reading of ordinance twenty twenty-two dash ten.
Hey mayor, this is ordinance twenty twenty-two dash ten, an ordinance amending chapter seventeen point three-two parks and open space and chapter seventeen point eight-six parkland and open space of title seventeen of Sandy Municipal Code and declaring an emergency.
Right, is there a motion to adopt the? Is that what I do? Is there a motion to adopt the first reading?
I'll make a motion. I make a motion to adopt the code modifications by emergency by adopting ordinance number two thousand twenty-two dash ten.
Sir, a second.
I'll second.
Motion by councillor Walker, a second by councillor Exner to adopt the first reading, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed nays, motion carries. Since that's unanimous, why don't we go ahead and move with the second read, Jeff?
Okay, mayor, this is ordinance twenty twenty-two dash ten, an ordinance amending chapter seventeen point three-two parks and open space and chapter seventeen point eight-six parkland and open space of title seventeen of the Sandy Municipal Code and declaring an emergency.
A motion to approve the second reading.
I'll make a motion to approve the second.
Sir, a second.
I'll second that.
Motion by councillor Sheldon, a second by councillor Pete's old to accept the second reading of ordinance twenty twenty-two dash ten. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed nays, motion carries, great, all right, moving on to our public hearing for tonight. I will open public hearing for ordinance twenty-two dash eleven here at seven forty-one on June sixth, any abstentions from the hearing body? Seeing none, I will call for conflicts of interest from the hearing body. Seeing none of those, Shelley, staff report, welcome.
All right, so you might remember back in September of twenty twenty-one, the city council held a public hearing and adopted the two thousand and twenty-one Parks and Trails Master Plan. Since then, the consulting team and staff identified a few updates that made sense to make. Which is why we are bringing to you the amended Parks and Trails Master Plan, which was reviewed as a comprehensive plan amendment. So the request, the applicant is the city of Sandy, the request was a type four comprehensive plan amendment, which is why it needs to come in front of city council, and this amends the Parks and Trails Master Plan, which was adopted by ordinance in September of last year. So just to give a little refresher on this updated Parks and Trails Master Plan, the previous plan was published in nineteen ninety-seven, the same year as the previous comp plan, so it was due for an update. The new plan has a fifteen-year planning horizon. It does a couple of things, it talks about the current conditions of parks and trails. And then based on that analysis of current conditions, it recommends locations and types of new parks and trail facilities. It also recommends maintenance needs and updates to our existing parks and trails facilities. And finally, it recommends funding strategies for implementation of the plan. So there were three main categories of amendments to the plan that were made, that we're asking for your vote to adopt tonight. One is to align the Parks and Trails Master Plan with the Transportation System Plan Update. There are details in the staff report, but essentially it had to do with the capital improvement plan list to make sure that the Parks and Trails Master Plan and the TSP did not contradict one another on CIP projects. We also saw it beneficial to update all the census data in the plan with the new twenty twenty census data. And then finally, we wanted to align the methodology that was used to determine level of service and needs analyses with the proposed development code amendments, which you just voted on. And so the review criteria of a type four comprehensive plan amendment, as prescribed by title seventeen of the development code. The first criterion is that it is the best means of meeting and identifying public need. We believe that this is the best means of identifying the public need of well-maintained, well-planned parks and trail facilities and that these amendments follow those benefits. And then the second review criterion is that it needs to meet statewide planning goals, so in the staff report, I refer you to the original final order for the September twenty twenty-one adoption, which details what the statewide planning goals are. But I do want to go a little bit into how these amendments also meet those planning goals, so goal one, citizen involvement, there was of course the engagement strategy associated with the initial plan, which included a robust variety of engagement tools. In addition to that, there are the legal requirements associated with a type four comprehensive plan in the process, which were followed. And then goal two, land use planning. The way that's relevant to this application is related to the procedural requirements, which we are required to follow in order to amend the comprehensive plan. If you're interested in a more in-depth analysis of all of the statewide planning goals that are relevant to the Parks and Trails Master Plan, I would invite you to look at the original final order for the September twenty twenty-one adoption as well as the ordinance findings for this ordinance. So the Planning Commission, the Parks and Trails Advisory Board and staff all recommend that city council approve this comprehensive plan amendment to adopt the amended Parks and Trails Master Plan. And similarly to how the development code amendments, we encouraged you to adopt them by emergency. We also encourage you to adopt this by emergency. As Kelly explained, if, you know, we received some new development applications tomorrow, then they would be required to follow the prescription of the Parks and Trails Master Plan amendments.
Great, thank you, Shelley. Moving forward to the public testimony portion of the evening, please try to avoid repetition if someone else has already expressed the same thoughts, it is sufficient to state that you agree with the statements of a previous speaker, even if that's all you say. If you have materials that you wish to have considered by the city council as part of this hearing, please email your materials to recorder at ci.sandy.or.us and staff will make sure your evidence is incorporated into the record. For those of you joining us in person this evening, please raise your hand at the appropriate time to indicate you would like to speak and wait to be recognized. If you're participating online, click the raised hand button at the appropriate time and wait to be recognized. If you're participating via telephone, simply dial star nine to raise your hand and wait to be recognized. I'll call on each person when it's their turn to speak, each participant will receive up to three minutes to testify and Jeff will let you know if you have twenty, that you have twenty seconds remaining. Our city council rules do require each person state their name and address for the record. Call, now calling for any testimony on the proposed ordinance, three minutes.
Okay, mayor, I'll just look for any raised hands online. And I do not see any raised hands.
All right, Shelley, you're up already again.
Um, no recap. But again.
Same recommendation.
Same recommendation.
All right, thank you, it hasn't changed, huh? You're still there, all right, good. I will now call for a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion to close the public hearing.
Second. Second, motion by councillor Pete's old, the second by councillor Sheldon to close the public hearing, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed nays, I'm closing this public hearing at seven forty-eight on June sixth, discussion. Oh, good to meet you.
Question.
All right.
So my understanding, I don't know if this is a Shelley or Rochelle or Kelly, so I'll just put it out there, you guys decide who who knows the most about it, so the TSP is not finalized yet. And yet we've moved some of the trails from the Parks and Trails Master Plan to the TSP. Are we sure that those are going to stay in the TSP? And then kind of when we did the last TSP, we were kind of oh, discussing whether or not, you know, trails should be in the TSP and the Parks and Trails Master Plan or one or the other or what? And you know, and some of the advice we got was that having them in both is even better. Because there may be opportunities with one aspect or the other. It seems like what you've done now is kind of more said that the, it's going to be in one or the other, is that? Is that what you're doing and is, even though the TSP isn't done yet, can you kind of?
Sure. Yeah, so it's my understanding, and Kelly or Rochelle can add on to this, that it is going to be in both. And even though the TSP is not done, what we do know is that what is in the tier one Parks and Trails Capital Improvement Plan is in, we just didn't want there to be any contradiction between what the plans are for what will be included in the TSP and what is in the Pleasant Street Master Plan. Pleasant Street, I'm sorry, no Parks and Trail.
What I can add to that, councillor Walker, to add a little more therapy, is that it's really all three, so there's some trails that are going to be specifically just TSP-funded projects, some that will be parks funded and some that will be a cost sharing from the two different funds. And this was at the advice of the city attorney's office and the SCS group that we don't want to double dip in, in cases where it is going to be just funded by TSP money or, you know, transportation funds or just funded by parks funds, so. And the consultant groups, FCS and DKS, who's working on the TSP, they collaborated together, so DKS now has the updated list for the TSP adoption, so yes, they should, they should be, they should stay through, through the TSP adoption.
Great, okay, thank you. All right, I'm calling for that first reading, Jeff.
Mayor, this is ordinance twenty twenty-two dash eleven, an ordinance adopting a revised twenty twenty-two Parks and Trails System Master Plan and declaring an emergency.
All right, sir, a motion.
Make a motion that we accept the first reading of ordinance two thousand twenty-two dash eleven, an emergency.
Sir, a second.
A second.
Motion by councillor Pete's old, a second by councillor Smallwood, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed nays, motion carries, seeing that we're unanimous, let's go to the second reading.
Okay, this is ordinance twenty twenty-two dash eleven, an ordinance adopting a revised twenty twenty-two Parks and Trails System Master Plan and declaring an emergency.
Sir, a motion to adopt the second reading.
I move to accept the second reading of ordinance twenty twenty-two dash.
As an emergency.
As an emergency.
Sir, a second.
I'll second it.
Now, there's a motion by councillor Exner, a second by councillor Walker to approve the second reading of ordinance twenty-two dash eleven. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed nays, motion carries, all right, moving forward to old business, Bull Run, thank you so much, Shelley.
The first in-person city council meeting that I've been to.
I, you know, I was wondering that, yeah, it's good to see you.
Two and a half years.
How, you've been with us two and a half years. All right, old business, Bull Run Water Supply Decision Reevaluation.
Do we need to get the presentation out?
So it's, you just need to share the screen. You can go to presentation.
Jenny, this is quite the presentation, did you put this together, or did Murray Smith?
Oh, we both did.
It looks nice.
Thank you.
Water in the back, it's clean.
Well, thank you, everyone, so the decision to be made today is a reconsideration of the decision to construct a new water treatment plant to treat raw water from the city Portland's full-run water source. And the objective is to comply with the mandate to meet treatment requirements for kryptonite spridium by September thirtieth, twenty twenty-seven. And see. I think instead of reading the staff report, I am going to switch to the presentation. We have been through this presentation before and in the interest of time, I tried to streamline it, so we're not quite into the nitty-gritty and I'll go past a little bit faster, but in essence, we're going to go little bit over the background of Sandy's water resources, talk about water supply, water demands, changes to Portland, our alternatives, the schedule and our recommendation and that steps, my goal is to do this in ten minutes, so. So today, water supplied from three different sources. So you can see my cursor, we get water from the Bull Run through Portland's wholesale water supply. We also have our own treatment plant, seven miles out of town is Alder Creek Surface Water Treatment. And our oldest source of water are Brownell Springs. We also have rights on the Salmon River water, which are not yet developed. I'm talking about groundwater, between Alder Creek isn't groundwater, but between Brownell and Alder Creek, our maximum water supplies two point seven MGD, the undeveloped Salmon River permit has sixteen point two MGD. However, in the past, we haven't developed it, there's a lot of regulatory hurdles, what happened there? So as part of the water master plan, we again looked at the groundwater resources just to ensure there wasn't a groundwater source that we could develop here. And the results were, it's very unlikely we could develop a well field that could produce five MGD, which is kind of what we need for a long-term investment. There are some potential options that we could look at for the Salmon River permit. We could potentially attempt to do a surface-to-ground water transfer, although that would take many years and we can't do it in the timeframe that we're looking at. There's another option further out into the future, maybe twenty years, twenty, thirty years down the road, is we could look at there would be a for, an intake on the Salmon River and a four-mile pipeline through our Alder Creek Treatment Plants to continue to tap into our resources as city, as Sandy considers, continues to grow in the future, sorry, I will get in my rhythm here. Changes to Portland's supply, Portland's building a new filtration plant to meet surface water rules, it needs to be operational by fall of twenty twenty-seven, and the treated water that we currently get right now, these, this kind of green line, these are the existing Portland Water Bureau. these, this kind of green line, these are the existing Portland Water Bureau conduits that come from the Bull Run. This blue line is where Sandy currently has our connection through the Hudson Road Intertie. And this blue pipeline is the water supply transmission main that takes the Bull Run Water to City of Sandy. After twenty twenty-seven, this uh, connection that we have will no longer be chlorinated, nor will it be in compliance for cryptosporidium. So our our choices for maintaining this supply are either to keep this connection, build our own treatment facility, a second treatment facility that would need about three to five acres of land, or to build a pipeline to connect to the proposed Portland Water Bureau uh, Finnish Water Filtration Plant. And just a a brief history, in two thousand eight, we signed a twenty-year water supply agreement with the Portland Water Bureau. In two thousand eleven, Sandy connected the infrastructure to connect through the Hudson Road Pump Station and uh, Transmission Main. In two thousand eighteen, Sandy signed an agreement with Oregon Health Authority to treat the Bull Run Water Source for cryptosporidium. We have the same compliance deadline of September twenty twenty-seven. And then last June, um, based on some preliminary information in the planning process, we elected to build a treatment plant to continue to treat raw water from Bull Run instead of connecting and purchasing filtered treated water from City Portland. And so today, we're here to revisit that decision, mostly based on all the infrastructure projects we have coming up and new information based on costs from both Portland as well as our our own estimates. And a little compliance status with O H A. Um, the most important thing here is again, this compliance deadline, which I'm going to emphasize, this is coming up quickly. Um, we, you know, my first order of business is to finish our master plan. And so this decision today will inform the master plan um, and say what we're going to do moving forward so that we can hit this compliance date. So in terms of water demand, you talk about average daily demand, which is, think of the winter demands when you're not irrigating. Those are, those are the low demands. And today, our average daily demand is about one point two M G D. Our max day demands occur in the summer, mostly driven due to irrigation, and those are two point one M G D. Uh. We need additional water supply to meet our max day demands starting in twenty twenty-seven. Until then, if we maximize our water sources between Alder Creek and Brownell Springs, we could uh, reliably meet our average daily demands until twenty twenty-seven. But I will point out that currently Alder Creek is not fully operational. It's down to about half of the capacity due to reinvestments. It has a reliable capacity right now of about point nine M G D, though occasionally a long day can run as much as one point five M G D. And as we go into the future, our maximum day is estimated to be thirty years in the future around, oh, let's cover it, I think it's six M G D. And then our average day demand is coming in about three and a half M G D. So we do need a third water source as we grow to supplement our two existing sources. But maximizing our existing sandy sources is the most cost-effective way to keep our, the cost of our water down. And we did look, had a lot of different combinations of options, just buying water from Portland and minimizing investment to Alder Creek, to maximizing investment in Alder Creek. And really what the result showed is, I think it makes intuitive sense. We need to maximize our sources of water because they're less expensive than purchasing it from Portland. And so we're really down to two options, both of them, which include reinvesting in Alder Creek. Um, purchasing the the plan that was elected last year, which is purchasing raw water and building a second water treatment plant, maintaining and operating that as well as rebuilding Alder Creek, or purchasing filtered filtered water and building a pipeline to the new filtration plant as well as increasing Alder Creek or reinvesting in Alder Creek. And this is a a map. We worked out the the best alignment, which would be down Bluff Road to the water treatment plant. Um, there's a lot of advantages to this. It's basically an existing right-of-way, and although it's slightly longer, it will be a lot faster and easier to build. Um, the more direct route down Musthead, we'd have to acquire twenty-five or twenty-seven properties, twenty-five owners, as well as tunnel into the site. And that was much more expensive, but we did, we did cost that out as well. And this is the summary that comparing these two options. Um, this column here is purchasing filtered water from from Portland and building the Bluff Road Pipeline, and it also includes upgrading Alder Creek. The capital cost for this, again, these are planning estimates, but we're trying to baseline them high, is forty-seven point two million. That's the, it's the total initial investment for those. And the lifecycle cost, which includes the operation, the maintenance, as well as the purchased water, comes out to eighty-five point six million dollars. And we also broke out the total cost of purchasing this filtered treated water over thirty years. Uh, it was estimated to be ten point seven million dollars. On the flip side, if we look at purchasing raw water from Portland and building a second water treatment plant, the total investment of that option is fifty-eight point four million dollars. And the total lifecycle cost of this option um, is a hundred and forty-three point four million dollars. And that did include quotes from Veolia for operating and maintaining two water treatment plants, um, as well as the purchase cost of purchasing raw water. Um, and the thirty-year cost for purchasing raw water was six point one million dollars. Um. So again, there's approximately eleven million dollars in savings of building the pipeline versus the treatment plant. The Alder Creek costs are the same in either version, although they're included. And the savings, the savings over time, over thirty years, oh, I have it right here, is approximately fifty-seven point eight million dollars between operating two water treatment plants versus operating one plus a pipeline. Um, there's some other there's some other risks here, uh, talking about the pipeline. The pipeline has to all be built at once. We do need to get an easement on Carpenter Lane, although we've been in discussions with Portland about how that could happen. Uh, all the constructions outside of the city, and the city can't meet the summer demand um, after twenty twenty-seven without the pipeline. Conversely, if we're building a second water treatment plant, we could build that in phases. We do need to acquire a three to five acre property near the existing pipeline. Um, and there's some uncertainty in terms of the land use permitting. And then more considerations, again, same columns. This column is building the pipeline, this column is building the second treatment plant. Um. For water filtration, the water treatment plant is built by Portland, and the cost of that is shared in by the wholesale customers and the Portland rate pairs. In terms of operational complexity, it's just simpler for the city to operate one treatment plant instead of two. Um. And then in terms of resilience and reliability, if Sandy was connected to the Portland Filtration Plant, Portland is making provisions for their groundwater backup supplies to be um, conveyed to that filtration plant. Um, there are details to work out, but we would have to look at pump stations, but we would be able to tap into those groundwater supplies. There may be some additional reinvestments, upsizing pump stations, but that's a a really interesting option that we don't get um, from the Bull Run. Now conversely, constructing a second treatment plant in this column, the city builds and owns the newest, the water treatment plant, but it's only paid for by the Sandy rate pairs, we don't tap into that larger cost pool. Um, it is expensive to operate two different water treatment plants, higher O and M costs, and we don't have a groundwater backup supply in this option. And then in terms of the program's schedule, this red red line here is showing the compliance date. Um, common to both alternatives is focusing on Alder Creek, and that's a a big focus of my department right now. But we would like to get that into construction in twenty twenty-five, and we would like to get that um, completed and reliable in twenty twenty-six, because that's the base of our production. Uh, we do show that the treated water pipeline, again, it looks like with reasonable schedules, this could be completed in the timeframe that we need. It's likely just with siding and final design and construction of a treatment plant that would push us past that compliance date. And so the recommendation that I have is that we upgrade Alder Creek and install a Bluff Road Water Transmission Pipeline to purchase filtered water. The capital cost would be forty-seven point two million, the thirty-year lifecycle cost eighty-five point six million. And this option had the lowest capital and lifecycle costs, faster schedule and resiliency, um, and access to groundwater. And the next step is for the council to formalize this decision. Um, and then we would move ahead with refining the condition assessments for Alder Creek and its needs, in addition to other capital projects that are also needed in the water system, such as the reservoirs, especially for serving development, completing our master plan, evaluate land use and permitting associated with the pipeline, developing a pop, a funding approach, as well as hiring a program manager and design team. The schedule I have to do this is, I need to get an R F Q on the street for hiring a program manager July first, and then start working on an R F E to hire an engineer in January this year. To meet the schedule, we have to move forward very quickly.
That hire should be easy. Such a good market.
So I know that was a lie, um.
Yeah.
Are there, are there any questions? I'm sure then.
Well, I had just to start by saying thank you, this was a great review. You you did an excellent job going through with all the factors and weighing those against each other, staff doing your one-on-one meetings and everything like you have. I just wanted to start there with your education of council, just really appreciated it, so thank you for that. Don, I saw you hit your hand up.
Yeah, no, I agree with that, thanks. In the staff report, there was a mention that might have to do something because of the blending of the treated water from Portland and the the water coming out of Alder Creek, can you? Is the chemistry incompatibility with the minute to waters, is there something special you have to do?
There, there would be a change. Portland is using chloramines for disinfection. They have a very long treatment system, and it just allows for the disinfection to stay active longer. Um. We we would have to change our disinfection to model that. It wouldn't be good to have a system where we can't have water supported from our different sources.
Pricing.
It it is factored into the pricing, it it is a change. Um. But I factored it into the pricing and many other districts do this, it's it's not unusual.
Will it change the quality of the water that people are used to drinking? Will they be able to notice that change and how? What would be coming out of Alder Creek? People like our water.
Uh, some people like our water. There's parts of the community where the water.
People from Texas love our water.
Yeah.
When they turn on the Bull Run water.
Yes, yeah, yes.
I'm a, I'm a. I think, I think it's because the chlorine is very strong when it comes in from Bull Run, so.
Yes.
I, I'm sorry, I should have been more prepared for that question. I do think, I do think it would be the same or an improvement. There are there are some issues with um pipe, sorry, words are leaving my mouth. Seals. It's similar to chlorinated water, you couldn't just use that water in your fish aquarium. People who do home dialysis are going to have to not be able to use the water from the tap, and we'd have to provide them water. But I think this is the same as chlorinated water too, if you're doing something like that, so it's it is going to be a change, and we are going to have to look into the details, but we did price some of that in. So I would prefer not, because rechlorine is easier. It's it's less equipment, so, but it's it's a design detail to work out.
Jordan, did you have a follow?
Actually, I'm I'm curious too, is there any taste difference, you know, and?
Uh, well, I'll tell you that's having, Don is, I mean, having just spent two days in Vegas, there's a big difference.
Say Brownell Springs is the best tasting water.
I know, but we don't have a lot of Brownell Springs, so. It's you know, it's, we're really talking long-term solution. There are, there are steps we could take, but you know, interim steps are expensive. Um. With these big projects, I would rather see us do the investment and just make the change instead of doing like an interim and then changing over. The these are all details and options that we'll get into.
Yeah.
So I'm trying to pick this up higher.
Carl.
I'd like to back up a little bit, um, have cited not to further look into the well situation in terms of finding a piece of property that would provide enough water to supply us out through, because uh, well, water does not need the filtration work that we'll have to do with the Bull Run, I guess the whole crux of the matter. We're taking a surface water, trying to make it match up with all the federal regulations coming down the road. Um, in my mind, I'm wondering i- is there a a legal issue, like a water rights issue that stops us cold from having the, doing more pro work in terms of getting a piece of property or maybe multiple properties that provide us with that kind of well water?
I I would love to develop a groundwater source, and we did get an updated groundwater um, desktop study that was requested by the council, and I would be happy to share that with you. They the, what they found with the soils is there just is not a site that looks like it could support three to five M G D, which is what they need. It's possible, if we do some prospecting, we might be able to turn one up that does one to possibly two M G D. But what I've heard is the only way to find out is to do these test bits that are around seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars a time. And and even if you do get that, you do have to treat that water, is what they said in the report. So it's. Yeah.
Well, I know that uh, Gresham Portland won't use well water, and thereafter, those things as an alternative, you discussed that already.
They must have just found bigger aquifer.
They go to wave.
They're over by the Columbia.
Right, right.
They are, so it's we're just faced with so many, so many choices right now, and especially looking at where we're going to put our wastewater effluent. I feel like we're spending money on multiple different options because we don't have an alternative. Uh, we we're not sure where we're going to go. So with what we have to do with water, I really think we need to focus on Alder Creek first, because we get Alder Creek back up and running fully operational, that is most of our water needs. And that secures us for the near future. Um. What I said to Jordan is, we're not sure if they will get them, but some of these loans have a forty-nine percent forgiveness. I think if we get through the next couple of years and we get our water infrastructure built and some money is forgiven, then maybe we would want to explore some of these smaller well sources, just to have some more backup supply to give us some more options. But right now, the results were that there just is not a groundwater source that has enough water for us.
In in some cities, I know that there is an issue about senior versus junior water rights. And at some point along the line, when you get to that point where um, fights happen, those who are junior don't get the water and those that are senior do. So you'd have to buy something that's that right, that has a senior water rights, even if you go down deep into the aquifer. So those would be a risk, I guess. And and the reason why I'm thinking about this is I talked to Jordan a little bit about this a couple of years back. Our office sold a piece of property that had five M G Bs um, that we could have used, they were irrigation. that we could have used. They were irrigation wells, not drinking water wells. But certainly there could be properties out there that might show up for that. But I, I don't want to put the city into a risk where maybe it currently we have the water coming out of these wells. But then when the fights start and Eastern Oregon is in a big fight about water rights all the time. So I just want to know what the risk is because I have a fair amount of concern about working with City of Portland. In that things happen and we could certainly be into the boat down the road having, finding out that Portland suddenly finds out that there is a, a problem that we have to come up with millions of dollars to fix that we haven't really even thought about at the moment. And I think that's part of my problem is is looking at making sure that we don't have any alternative that we haven't really looked at. And the desk is sort of in that mode. But seven hundred thousand dollars is quite the test.
Yeah.
Cost. That's tough for me to find into that particular piece.
Really concerned about the fact that we have this July and January deadline before we don't make our compliance date of twenty twenty seven. So if as a council, we get direction that isn't real crisp on hitting July and January, then come twenty twenty eight, we will be curtailing or boil water orders or something. That's what we're faced with, right?
Certainly, and I don't want to go past that twenty seven date.
I feel like the window of options has closed on this. I mean, that's how I viewing the reports in the last few times with Jenny is that just we have options, but nothing before twenty twenty.
Is that what you agree with, Jenny?
Yeah, and I'm not in disagreement with that at all. And that's why I like hearing about going after the groundwater. Would we have possibly some more revenue to do so later on, you know, read, looking at the Sam and writes all those things. Those are things we need to be exploring after we kind of do this initial investment out there.
You're talking about twenty to thirty year contract with the city of Portland. So we're talking about a fairly long distance commitment. And they haven't worked out as the best in the world in the past. I'm also concerned as you are about making sure we meet our twenty twenty seven deadline.
But you're also, just to clarify though, you're talking about a twenty year contract for only for one of your sources of water. You know, and, and that is a little bit of a different thought process than that's where I'm getting it all.
Right. And it's a varying amount of water too. So there would be, as she said, there'd be some fixed costs, but there'll be a variable cost depending on how much we take. So we develop more sources, we take less, we spend less.
I would, I would say I would be much more comfortable if we were not required, as we are today, to accept a certain amount of expensive water, no matter whether we need it or not.
Well, that is a change to the new agreement. They're doing away with the minimum purchase. But we do have to work out and forecast what we're going to take. So there are, there are a lot of nuances about. I, I was just trying to get up to speed. There's, there's a lot of different meetings on the new wholesale agreement focusing on a lot of these issues, including what Portland will spend for operation and capital costs. So a lot of these different pieces are being addressed and I would be really happy to have a work session with one of our consultants was instrumental in rewriting the sum agreements. I hear you though. There there are risks. It is expensive water, but I've been speaking to the engineers designing the filtration plant and the direction is if full run is on fire, they're at that, that filtration plant is still going. They're pulling down below in the lowest lake. Those filters are designed to take that. So having that reliability for us, for me, what I'm concerned about is if there's a fire at Alder Creek, could we get in and operate it without being our prime source? And so having the option to have that backup, because our water needs are still very small compared to Portland and the other wholesale customers.
Still having three sets of water options at any one particular time, I think could save us if we get into a real problem in any one of those options. So it certainly seems like the right thing to do. I just want to make sure we look at all.
And just, you know, you have a council, everyone agree with you on that, Carl.
But I do feel a fair amount of concern here. I don't see any options either, but test the waters.
Just a quick question. I just want to clarify that the groundwater getting back fed to Sandy through that new pipe is possible, right?
Yes.
So we'll actually have four sources of possible water.
Yeah.
That's going to be important if something goes south.
There are additional studies we'd have to, we're, we're just at the very beginning of this, but they are doing this for their other customers. So we might have to pay to upgrade some pumps. So it's enough for us and you know, it might not be three MGD, maybe it's, but it's something, you know.
I'm giving a motion here.
Yeah.
I'll do it. I moved to direct staff to notify City of Portland and the Oregon Health Authority Drinking Water Service Program of Sandy's intent to purchase filtered water from the city of Portland's new filtration plant after September twenty twenty seven and to pursue those options that we've talked about for redundancy in groundwater.
That's great. Just give us a second. Man, that, that's hard due for you. I think a motion from Counselor Okison and a second from Counselor Smallwood. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed mate. Motion carries. Thank you, Jenny. Again, thank you for your hard work.
Yes.
The communication. And all right, new business, park system development charges in fee and lieu update. We used to only make staff show up and be part of the meeting. Now we just need everyone part of the meeting.
Um, well, good evening, Mayor Council. It's good to be here tonight. We've been working on this since September and we finally are prepared to present FCS's methodology that they had discovered about our SDC fee and lieu update. And these findings were presented to the Parks Board on May fifth, so they have seen the, the findings and the plans. And then tonight it'll be presented by FCS Zach Hazel and John Gerrell Ducci. I apologize, John, if I pronounced your name wrong. I'm sorry.
Great.
Okay, it was close hopefully. But without further ado, I'll hand it over to them and then we'll end with questions and comments. And then our hope is to, we're going to continue to work with FCS directly on an implementation plan that we will bring back later to the council to speak about and then adoption in the future. So, okay.
Thank you. I'll, I'll actually lead off. I'm John Gillarducci and thank you very much, Mayor and Council. So what, what we'll do and what we're here tonight to do is present our findings on the park system development charge calculation and also the fee in lieu of land dedication. So I will go through some background about system development charges and then Zach will take us through the calculations and then I'll talk a little bit about implementation at the end. So it sounded like from some of the earlier discussions that I heard that you're well aware of what system development charges are. I'll, I'll hit some of the, some of the highlights of, of the characteristics of SDCs. For those who maybe don't know, we're, we're not talking about ongoing rates here or any, any charges that already developed property pays. These are the one-time fees paid at the time of new development. Redevelopment in some cases, when it's, when it's getting bigger and putting a larger demand on your systems. But for the most part, these are charges on new development. The law allows us to charge system development charges for water, wastewater, stormwater, transportation and parks. And, and tonight's topic is parks. We can only use SDCs for capital project costs. We can't use them for operations. We calculate them based on capital costs and, and as I mentioned, we spend them only on capital. They have two pieces in most cases. One is a, a buy-in to any existing infrastructure assets that, that exist and are available for growth to use. And then the other part, the larger piece in this case is all about planned projects and the, the growth related portion of those planned projects. Those make up the other component of the system development charges. So and then one last thing, these are for a share of, of system facilities, not if this were water, we would not be talking about the meter or the installation. We're talking about a share of major system facilities, in this case, the park system. So we follow the law very closely. It's in ORS two, two, three, two ninety seven through three fourteen gives us a really good rulebook for how to calculate a system development charge, how we can spend the money, what considerations we have to make to ensure that no one's paying more than their equitable share. This is a schematic of the, of the calculation. It's, it's a pretty straight, the math is pretty straightforward. The devil is in the details coming up with the numbers that make up the calculation. So that the reimbursement fee, that's the buy-in to existing facilities. To calculate the reimbursement fee, we have to isolate the cost or value of unused capacity that's available for future users. We divide that by the growth that it will serve and that gets, gives us our reimbursement fee. The improvement fee, if you picture a list, a long list of capital projects, we have to isolate the growth related portion of each project and the sum total of those growth related project costs divided by the growth that it will serve, gives us our reimbursement fee. I mean, excuse me, improvement fee. The two of them together then make up the system development charge. One, a share of existing capacity, the other, a share of capacity that will be built to serve future users. So we will also share with you a recalculated fee in lieu of land dedication. The city offers an option for a developer to pay a fee in lieu instead of dedicating land as part of, of their development for, for a park. So that fee is based on the current cost of undeveloped land. And then the amount of park acreage needed per resident as determined by the future level of service in parks per, per thousand and then per, per person in population that the city will achieve. So you see the math there, the cost per acre times the, the number of future acres needed per resident equals the fee in lieu. And then we use occupancy averages to come up with the fee and for a single family residence, a multi-family residence and a mobile home residence. So this is what the current SDC is, three thousand seven seventeen for a single family dwelling unit. And then the fee in lieu is three thousand one oh nine for a single family dwelling unit. You see some of the inputs that make up that fee and lieu calculation. Spoiler alert, all, all these numbers have gone up substantially. Two hundred forty one thousand per acre is now over eight hundred thousand dollars per acre. There's more park land available per resident. So that point oh, oh, four, three has also gone up. So you will see a higher fee in lieu when we get to that slide, but the resulting math shows you how the three thousand one oh nine was derived.
All right. So I'm going to take you through the calculations of the system belt charge and the fee in lieu. We're going to start with the system development charge. So just a quick reminder here that this is the maximum allowable SDC. You can charge anything below this max. We've simply calculated the ceiling that you can legally charge. Here's a summary of the full calculation that I'm going to walk you through in detail in a second. So we have the improvement fee cost basis at the top there for fifty three million. The reimbursement fee cost basis is second there for twenty one million. And we have a little smidgen of compliance costs in there as well to bring a total cost basis of seventy four million. When you divide that by your growth in residents that we're expecting from the parks plan, that's sixty five hundred residents, that gives us a total SDC per resident of eleven thousand four hundred seventy eight dollars. Then using occupancy data, that gives us the fee schedule you see at the bottom by dwelling unit type for a single family dwelling unit. These calculations work out to be thirty one thousand dollars. And just a quick note, the, the numbers you see here are based on census data, but you can continue to use your current practice of, I believe it's three people for a single family dwelling unit, two for a multi-family and one and a half for a mobile home. And I will give you those numbers at the end for how that looks. So let's start by, we're going to break into the calculations of the SEC. We're going to start with the simplest table here, which is your growth. But based on the parks planning process, your population in Sandy from twenty twenty to twenty thirty five is going to go from twelve thousand up to nineteen thousand. That's a growth of sixty five hundred people. And another important number you see on this screen is the far right there, the growth share percentage, which is just shy of thirty four percent. And what that growth share percentage tells you is in twenty thirty five, what percentage of the population will be, will have arrived between now and then, what percentage will be new residents? And because new residents are going to be the ones paying for SDCs, that percentage is also their share of certain projects on the project list. Specifically, that, that share is their share of projects on the infill list. So what we've done with the project list is we've split it into two lists. And the first one you see here is the infill list. Projects on the infill list added new amenities to existing park acreage. You're not adding additional park acreage if any of these projects are just putting better amenities on the parks that you do have. And we've decided that we're going to new and existing users are going to split those amenities roughly equally, which is why you see the growth share eligibility percentage for a lot of these projects. So those projects that have zero percent eligibility, that is because they are entirely repair or replacement projects and those cannot be included in SDC. So the eligible cost of projects on the infill list is just over a million dollars. So you see in the bottom right there. Next up is the expansion list. These are any projects on your list that do add acres to your, to the system. So you can see a list of each park project here with its type. And when the project, project is expected to occur, its total cost, and then how many acres it's going to add of this park type to your park system. And then on the far right, we do make a note if you're actually reusing acres that you already have, but just developing them into a new use. So this is your park acreage project. So any parks that are, or any projects that are adding acreage. But you also have a fair number of, of projects that don't add acreage, but they add trail miles. So I'm just scrolling through the full list here. You can see that we're adding eight point five million dollars in terms of trail projects. That's twenty four linear miles of trails. So working out the eligibility for projects on the infill list, which is the first list we looked at, was relatively simple. Now, when you're adding additional park acreage or trail miles to your park system, there's no universal standard for how many acres or trail miles you need. And so we do what's called a level of service analysis to determine based on the parks list and your future population, what level of service are you going to achieve? And we use that as the benchmark for eligibility of your park projects. So I'm going to walk through an example here. So we did this for all three categories. We did this for acres of park natural areas, number of special use sites and miles of trails. I'm just going to walk through one example here with the miles of trails at the very bottom you see there. So in twenty twenty, you had nine point nine six miles of trails in your park system. That works out to be just shy of zero point eight miles per one thousand residents. And as we just mentioned, your parks, your project list is adding twenty four miles to the park system. So in twenty thirty five, you will achieve a higher level of service there of one point seven eight miles per one thousand residents. Now, if you took that level of service, one point seven eight, and you applied it to your current population, you would need to have twenty two point four three miles of trails now today. Basically saying that you're not meeting your level of service when measured by this future standard of one point seven eight. So because, because we, we only want growth paying for the trail projects that they need. And because you're deficient in your trail projects, only forty eight percent of your trail projects are going to be eligible for inclusion in the SDC. But you can see that this calculus works out a little bit differently for acres of park and natural areas. You see that for that category, you actually are a hundred percent eligible for inclusion in your SDC. In fact, you actually have more acres than you currently need, which gives you a reimbursable quantity you see on the far right there of sixty, just shy of sixty one acres. So a little bit of a complicated table there, but the numbers that are relevant here is the eligibility, one hundred percent for parks, natural areas, forty eight percent for trail miles. And we can now apply those to the project list that we just spent a fair amount of time scrolling through. So for your acres of parks, natural areas, applying that one hundred percent eligibility factor gives you forty nine million dollars of eligible costs for those projects for trail projects, applying that forty eight percent to the project list gives you four point one million. That gives you an expansion project list, eligible cost basis of fifty three million. And when you add in that smidgen of info projects, that gives you up to fifty four point four million. So like I mentioned, because you you're actually doing so well in terms of your acres of natural areas and parks, you actually have some reimbursable quantity. And so we've developed a method to figure out how to fairly collect for what you've already built. So in twenty twenty, the the development cost per unit for each of these categories is listed right there, and that's based on the master plan process you just finished. Next, you see weighted average age. What we did is we looked at your park system and we figured out based on acquisition data that we had and based on the size of your parks, what the acre weighted or or just average ages for number of you special use sites or mile weighted average ages for miles of trails. We figured out the weighted average age for each of these parks categories. Then using that age, we applied inflation adjustment factor. So for the areas of parks and natural areas, we're going to use fifty four percent of the twenty twenty development cost per unit. We're deflating cost by about forty six percent. That works out to be an estimated original cost per unit for parts of natural areas of three hundred eighty, three hundred eighty three thousand. And so taking that cost per unit and applying it to your reimbursable quantity there for sixty acres of parks, natural areas, and then deducting for any outside funding, that gives us a total reimbursable cost for parks, natural areas of just shy of twenty one million and for special use sites of just over half a million for a total cost basis of twenty one point one million. That's the reimbursement fee. Now, before we make the final calculation, we're going to make a small adjustment, and I apologize. It's going back a little bit, but to the improvement fee cost basis, we have to take out any existing fund balance. And so that brings down the proof the cost basis a little bit. And then finally, we bring it all back together on the full system development charge calculation. We have our fifty three million improvement fee cost basis, twenty one million in reimbursement fee, a little bit for compliance costs. That brings us to a total cost basis of seventy four point four million. When you divide that by sixty five hundred residents that you're expected to add between now and the end of the planning period, that gives you an S T C per resident of eleven thousand, four hundred seventy eight dollars, which works out to be thirty one thousand dollars for a single family dwelling unit based on census data. Next up is the fee in lieu, fee in lieu of land dedication. It's a much quicker calculation. Right at the top there, we have the current cost per acre, and that was based on some recent assessor data that we pulled. Then we are applying the targeted acres per residents per your parks master plan. That's sixty eight ten thousandths of an acre per resident. Multiplying those two together gives you the calculated fee in lieu per resident of just shy of six thousand dollars. Again, using census data, that works out to be sixteen thousand dollars for a single family dwelling unit. When you add together the S T C and the fee in lieu, you get a total parks impact fee, I guess, of forty seven thousand dollars. You can see in that middle line there. If you give me one second, I can tell you what that would be with your current occupancy calculations.
I think I've got it, Zach. You you can confirm.
Thanks, Joe.
Seventeen thousand, seven thirty three would be the single family charge at three occupants per dwelling. Eleven thousand, eight twenty two would be a multifamily dwelling unit at two occupants per dwelling unit. And then the mobile home at one point five occupants per dwelling unit, eight thousand, eight sixty six. So just for comparative purposes, that that those would be the numbers with no code change required because those numbers are in the city code. To be honest, we we like the idea of current census based numbers, but either one would be defensible. Okay, so moving right into a compare, you you probably guessed when you saw the system development charge result that an almost tenfold increase would change things comparatively. We see a few in this range. None have been adopted yet at this at this level. But again, we're calculating the maximum defensible charge and and this was that result thirty one thousand, three thirty three. And then just to give you a sense of one of the one of the really good things about about the reimbursement fee. It's not linked specifically to the project list. And because you have a pretty robust reimbursement fee, you see S D C revenue there of almost, well, about seventy four and a half million dollars. That's both improvement fee and reimbursement fee revenue. It actually exceeds the total cost of the project list of almost sixty two million, which you see down in the uses category. So there's a fund balance at the end of the period. This is all theoretical because it's dependent on growth occurring as forecast, but but it is as as healthy a funding plan as we as we see, but it would also it also you know, in order to achieve this, the city would need to adopt a charge at the level we we just looked at. So and that is all of our prepared material. Any any questions? This is the as I understand it, this is the first of of what will likely be a couple of meetings on this topic.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Questions by council.
I guess my question would be is what you're proposing there, make sure I'm understanding that right, was to go to the to go all the way to the thirty three or just that's where we could be principally. You're not suggesting to go to thirty three thousand just for the parks S T C.
If if you're asking me, we are just showing you the calculated maximum and are not recommending it.
Okay.
Part of the part of the work within the next couple of months is come up with something that is, I think, more digestible as an implementation plan. Maybe you phase in over time, but you, I mean, we want to keep from the earlier conversation, we know that we want to be a little bit more in line with our, you know, other cities and what they're charging, but you know, we're not going to, we're not going to be able to fund seventy five million dollars with the projects if we have S T Cs or over thirty thousand dollars going to build here.
So I want my kids to one day be able to buy a house here.
Yeah, right. Exactly. Exactly.
I mean, part of the nuance there too, since we're raising the S T C, what categories are we raising? What budgets do we want to fill and have healthier where the overall needs of our community?
There's a lot of need.
In the past, when we did S T C calculations for the other portions, transportation and remind me, three of one was anyway, the other parts of the development charges, we went through any evaluation of what we thought was a priority and where we thought we could swallow the amount of is that what you're thinking about going to the next steps of or in my mind, this is a substantial increase in S T C charges as a maximum. My guesses will come up with some sort of less than maximum.
Yes, correct. And that will be the next step, working with F C S is taking the maximum and comparing it with the Parks and Trail System Master Plan. And there's a capital improvement plan in that in that master plan and looking at if we raise S T Cs fee in lieu a certain amount, what projects or land can we acquire and do that analysis? So we can paint a picture of, okay, this is our one to five year project. Yeah, yeah, we can.
Isn't there just a third is a thirteen million dollar difference between the max and doing everything on the capital improvement plan?
On that first one to five years.
Right. So I mean, if we opted for no surplus at the end of every many years we're planning out, then then we would have completed everything on the plan. And if we go for less than that amount, whatever that amount is, then we don't complete it. Right. That's what I'm understanding. Right. So when we set that fee, we're deciding how important to eliminate. You know.
Kathleen?
Yeah, that that was part of the thing that I didn't quite catch as to why. You know, it's like it's like how sausages make kind of listening to all this. Very interesting. And but what the what puzzles me is that you, like you pointed out, you don't use to determine what the the S T Cs are, you don't use the actual projects and park park projects and stuff that we have on our C I P list. You use something else, which really kind of puzzles me. Why aren't we using our C I P list for our trails and our existing park improvements and our proposed new parks?
I can speak to that if you'd like.
Yes.
That's okay. So if that's only the case for the reimbursement fee, and it is a little bit of a of an odd result. The the improvement fee we vary is very carefully linked to the project list. We go through each project and and determine the growth related share of it, and that's all we can include. The reimbursement fee, the city is basically paying itself back for the investment in parks that it's already made. And and it's made a substantial investment in parks in Sandy. So that's the part that's not looking at the future needs. It's looking at what you've already spent and you're getting that money reimbursed. And so as a result, you're going to have more money at the end of the period. And this is, again, assuming all the assumptions prove exactly true, which we know won't happen. But in theory, at the end of the period, yeah, you'll have more money than you need. So that might be a rationale for, you know, when we go back and start talking about phasing or what would be appropriate targets for the S T C, that might be a rationale for a reduction just to get to that point where there is a zero fund balance and you're able to fund the whole C I P as was mentioned already. I hope that helped.
The other part, the other question I had is I noticed you don't have any trail construction costs on some of your stuff, how much you spent and all on some of your data that you just presented, you have parks and you have the other stuff, but you didn't have trails.
Oh, in
on your stuff that you just presented. Yeah, you had blanks.
Not John, I can speak to that.
Okay.
So that's that's sure on the reimbursement side of things, we just didn't have didn't have good data on the age of the trail system and trying to figure out the age, when did you add this mile trail? Would you add that mile trail? We just didn't have the data for that. So that's why you don't see any reimbursement fee for the trail projects, but they are included in the improvement fee.
Well, you're talking to the person that built some of those trails, so.
She could tell you.
I should ask you.
But the other thing that that kind of also kind of comes into play is that we use kind of what we call hybrid contracting where we contracted with equipment operators, but we use like ant farm, AmeriCorps crew. You know, that kind of approach, we had, we had a lot of volunteer, I volunteered my time and stuff. And so, you know, the one point eight mile Tickle Creek Trail with five big huge bridges cost a hundred and eighty nine thousand dollars to build. That didn't include the land acquisition, but you know, it would have been at least two and a half million had have we been doing, you know, the regular Portland way of building trails. So how do we, and and you know, we're hopeful to do some of that. Obviously, you can't do that with, you know, parks and things like that. But but when you see our list of trails, a lot of them are gravel trails and stuff. And so you know, is that, does that change things, I guess, a little bit?
That that information could allow a higher trails component to the S T C.
Making it more expensive than the thirty three. I don't I don't think we want to go.
Yes. That's kind of what we thought, but yeah.
I don't, I mean, that's where I can't, you know, the thing is so complicated, I can't.
I know.
Or if we change this, does it go up or go down? We're wanting it to go down. So.
The picture.
So I think it's important, we can set whatever target we want underneath the map.
Yeah.
Setting that state.
They're saying that we can, we can defend this. Yeah. Yep. Okay. Well, great. I guess this is conclusion of day one of this meeting. More to go. So I really appreciate the presentation. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
So I do have a question for Michelle. What's the expectation of getting this thing completed? And we passed this evening, even we did some things in emergency to get them passed so that we can apply these to something that would be done like tomorrow. Anything that happens in the next few months, whatever it is your schedule is, wouldn't be part of this. So what are you thinking about in terms of scheduling?
Yeah. So July thirteenth, implementation plan will go before the parks board and then a quick turnaround and go before the council July eighteenth. And then we've done our ninety day notice as far as a public hearing. So then that will come back before the council September sixth for potential adoption.
The summer.
Thank you, Michelle.
Yeah, appreciate it. Thank you.
Yep. Hey, Jordan, you're under the gun. See me and your report.
Thanks, Barry. Quick update. Couple of fun things. First of all, a long state parkway on June twenty third. Hopefully, everybody did put that down on their calendar. Because we've got some girls for the council to operate.
Funny, I didn't know and I listened to the meeting after we spoke. We all want to grill it. So. Yeah, that was the first thing I said. I wanted to do the grill.
Yeah, we'll set you up. So June twenty third evening at Cascadia Park, send you some more details as we get closer. Another community event, the community cleanup day is back typically in the spring, but kind of had to work around some other events and work with the hood view. So this year's July sixteenth. I think that's a Saturday, actually. So a little also a little bit different than the past, as I understand it, but you know, on the weekend, maybe be kind of unique. People can clean up and haul their stuff out to the curb and have the community cleanup down in the middle of the summer there.
It'll be a curb site pickup or do we take it to a then?
Yeah. Curb side.
Sorry, the longest day.
Yeah.
Do we advertise that out to get any corporate sponsorships to blow it up ever like to be a big even bigger event? I mean, so communities, I mean, go live music and I'm just thinking coming out of COVID, you know, just looking for you know, spruce up our gatherings a bit, you know?
We started talking about changes to it. I think the way it started.
You have new leadership over there. So I know.
Well, I mean, I've seen the summer concerts and stuff. I think we're bringing back food and beverage to the movies and concerts and things. And adult beverages too, right?
Adult beverages.
The longest day kind of started as like a city, like, you know, is how I understand the history is like learn more about your city and the departments and what's going on. And we're kind of hosting this, you know, we're closing some streets, coming out on, learn more about what's going on. But there's that model like, you know, Portland has done and some other cities where you do bring in the sponsorships and there is entertainment and, you know, food and stuff that you can buy. So I think, you know, maybe going forward, we can think about making that bigger. You know, it's well attended, you know.
So popular.
Yeah, popular event that that's that's pretty cool. So I think going forward, we can. I think departments have fun getting involved and, you know, getting swag and handouts and ice cream, hot dogs.
It's a great event. Don't get me wrong.
And we're gonna have the duct tape, that's duct tape for the neighbors.
Well, I've done, I've done that before. So it raises good money.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah. You get to stand this close.
We're what part of the city are we going to have this?
This is a Cascadia. Yeah. The park, yeah.
I like to mess up my hair.
We have a couple of R F Qs out. You heard Jenny about their R F Q for the wastewater facility plan amendment. And then all night she was talking about the water R F Q coming up in in July. Sorry. But the community campus R F P is out and we're getting a tremendous response on that. Just remember that's a a scope that includes both the community campus concept plan for aquatics recreation center, but also the design and the documents for a park at the community campus too. So those aren't due until later in the summer, though, given ample time. So those aren't due until later in the summer, though, giving ample time for a good response. And then finally, just administrative, July fourth is Monday this year, there will be fireworks. And yeah, sponsored by Clackamas Bank in the city. But that means the city council meeting would be moved to July fifth, I talked to the mayor and it seems like a good time to take a break this year, kind of the middle of all these events. And the Mountain Festival coming up right after that too. So I think there'll be no meeting on July fourth. And then another administrative reminder, Juneteenth is a new holiday, both locally, federally, state holiday. So that is also on a Monday, I think it's the twentieth this year. And so the council, the next council meeting is actually on Tuesday, the twenty first.
Thank you.
Thanks. First of all, a couple shout outs to Jenny. Really appreciate all the the work we're doing there, I mean, it's bitter pills, but man, it's awesome. And Michelle, thanks as well for moving this stuff ahead, parks, really enjoyed their discussion this week. Rats, I want to talk about rats. Apparently, we're getting rats in the city.
We're getting rats.
Yeah.
We've had them walking into the fire station.
Yeah. I'm not talking about people.
No, I'm not either.
We're getting both maybe.
Yeah, we're getting rats, we've never had rats before, so.
Yeah.
We've been doing a lot for sewer lines.
Yeah.
Perhaps.
Yeah.
Perhaps. So anyway, there's a lot of reports of rats, I just wanted to point out a couple of things. At least one of my neighbors is complaining about chicken coops bringing in the rats, which may or may not be, we can't prove the motivation of why rats there. However, what I would like to ask is with Officer Moody, there was an inquiry that came out about the rats and he was told chicken coops are allowed, which is true. But if a chicken coop or anything else becomes a nuisance, then there might be remediation that might be appropriate. So I would just encourage that Officer Moody, go beyond just chicken coops are allowed, but maybe explore surrounding areas. See if we're into a nuisance area, trash or anything else that's not, they kept up. Maybe we can work on. That's my neighbor, I encouraged him to just work it out with his neighbor.
So there is, interesting, just since you brought brought it up. They have, I think they're about seventy five dollars, but you can get a box that actually makes, it's a feed box that does not poison them, so that other animals are not poisoned by eating a rat, but it makes them sterile. So and it's completely like safe for other, for other animals, so. Might be an interesting thing to pass along, because, you know, rats.
And maybe that's something to pass along to Officer Moody O'Hara for fields, these calls.
Well, what what stops the chicken from passing the egg at five thirty in the morning? That's what I'd like to know.
So I just, it's a cheap food source. Point that out, it was, it was an interesting opportunity for me to go back and look at our nuisance code. And there are things that are not, like rats are not actually listed as a nuisance item. But it does say that if anything, the council wants to declare a nuisance can be. So if if we can't get remediation through the stuff we have, then potentially this neighbor or others might have to come to council and ask for something to be cleared of nuisance, so I just thought of that up. With that, thanks.
That's come before the council in the past, about the chicken coop and the rat thing, as well as one other about rats. And that's when neighboring development happened, so you take a big grass field. You start rototilling and moving the dirt, all those mice or whatever come into the neighboring there to escape that. So with our developments around, I mean, I'm saying the fire department had it, but anyway, it's just some other.
Yeah, this is a.
Which came, which came part of a nuisance thing, the city had to then, you know, work with the planning department to make sure that they, I don't know what they do, kill off all the field mice before they.
But we are also, you know, doing updates and sewer too, so.
Yeah.
Could be. Where I live. Not far from Jeremy.
And where the mayor or.
Yeah, we all.
Oh, now we know where the.
It's all the politicians in one side of the city.
Live trap line and re-release them another.
It is the district we just finished relining. One of the two that we just finished, so. Thank you.
I'm having a hard time figuring out how to top that.
I know you have bee city there.
Yeah. Pollination, this is the month of June is National Pollination Month. And also just happens that the Pollination Week is the week that we have our longest day. And I just, I was just wondering, as I was thinking about this today, if there was an opportunity to do something like that, since this is a newly instituted deal in our city, then maybe we could do something within.
I expect Chrome being a B suit.
But there's, there's a lot of reasons to do this, and I think that would be well done. And maybe we can even do a proclamation for that, but I'm gonna push the mayor's arm later on. A couple of little more serious things, this is the the seventieth anniversary of D-Day.
Yes.
Twenty four, twenty five hundred, excuse me, Americans died in that twenty four hour period. Just amazing amount of commitment from people and it's the reason why we are free. So if you have a chance to tell a vet, thank you, appreciate all the work that's done, there's not too many of them left over. My father passed away about ten years ago, he wasn't in D-Day, but he was in Pacific Theater. Anyway, and the other second thing I wanted to just kind of let people know, I've done this a little bit with Jordan. But we happen to have the chair of the Clackamas County Planning Department is, Commissioner, I mean, is actually living just up here in the Welch's area. And, you know, I had a pretty good conversation just a short while ago about their code development for what they call middle housing. Which is our equivalent to the HR two thousand and one, what they're doing in that particular part of our county housing, and he would be happy to present maybe a short understanding about what's going on in Clackamas County. He told me he'd be available like on any Monday evening in the next couple of months. They are in the process of doing their code and they're ahead of us, they're planning to have it done and in effect by the summer. So they're ahead of us a little bit, so I would suggest I give you a phone number and Gerald Murphy would be happy to do that. And that is it for me.
Thank you, Carl, Kathleen.
Um, I just want to thank everybody for their staff presentation tonight, especially all the work that's done and done on the Parks and Trails Master Plan, the Parks Code Language and the Comp Plan Amendment to get it, you know, sanctioned and and then the SDCs. I think, you know, when you look at our existing SDCs, they're, you know, they, they're ridiculously low. They were the low, they're, I think we were under Malala or something like that, it was really low. And so, you know, I know that what's the the maximum seems really high, which, you know, I think it is a little high. But I do believe pretty strongly that we have kind of tried to, you know, build a lot of our parks and trail stuff with, you know, just kind of shoes, you know, bootstrapping it and we need to kind of really, you know, make make it happen with real money. And and I'm just thrilled that all the progress we've made, we've got great staff. I will kind of say on another note, though, the traffic on Bluff Road, I'm kind of out trying to work between all the rainstorms and the traffic on Bluff Road is just, you know, racing, they just race up and down Bluff Road. I I get Debarco is bad if you live on Debarco, but I'm the one, you know, Bluff Road. We did, we talked a little bit before about some of the issues with the trucks on Debarco and all that. And one of the things that I kind of might just throw, I don't want to add a bunch more works to the PW folks at all. But I know that I think, you know, Thomas or somebody does the kind of that traffic calming stuff. And people ask about speed limits and things like that. And, you know, I don't think it would be too much effort to look at getting those no truck signs, getting the ways and Google folks to, you know, the city has to kind of initiate it, I've done it for Forest Service roads about, you know, things that, you know, what's allowed and that kind of thing. And you can actually request that they take things off, you know, alternative routes that are getting, like Debarco that are getting used by stuff to get around twenty six, you could ask that they be taken off of there. So there's some really fairly easy, I think, prop, you know, approaches to kind of do that. And then the other thing I would just throw out there is, you know, again, considering in the future, looking at speed limits on Bluff Road. Because, you know, when they're going, you know, fifty and 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 fifty and above, you know, and I get it that, you know, that, you know, thirty, thirty five is the speed limit there and they're routinely going, you know, much faster than that. And so even just considering it to go down to twenty five might help, you know, then they might just go forty or something and you could probably live with that. So anyways, just those kind of things. Yeah, I mean, and it's not just a me thing, it's all my neighbors.
All the way to Kelso.
Yeah, it's, you know, it's the Bell Street, you know, it's, it's the high school folk, I mean, yeah, I don't want to say who it is.
All the way to the city limits.
You know, but yeah, it's basically out to Kelso, you know, from Kelso to. It's what's that?
Sorry for the cross tech, so I was asking a while back, we got a conversation, because there's that old twenty five mile per hour school sign, right, by the old high school, the junior high. Well, now that the high school's now further down the road.
It goes to thirty five.
Could we extend the school zone?
It goes all the way to parking lot to edge of school property.
They don't follow them thirty five. Unless we enforce it, it's going to be whatever they want to drive.
Yeah, but I mean, also just having, you know, having it slightly less. And, you know, like Debarco, we have lots of driveways and and all, and, you know, Green Mountain and all that traffic and stuff. And so I just feel like, you know, bluff doesn't get treated like the other arterials in Sandy. You know, you gotta, you got speed bumps and traffic circles and stuff on Debarco and.
Only one half of it, only that side.
Anyways, that's just, I just want to thank everybody for the whole park stuff, that's music to my ears.
Can I add to the two eleven discussions?
Three times passed.
I know it has, but until we fix the ability for a truck to turn left from the twenty six onto two eleven, putting a no truck sign going down Langinsend isn't going to do any good. The problem is if you're driving a big rig and you're making that left turn, you can only do it if the traffic backs up that's on mining. And so they take the other path, because they can't make a safe turn, depending on how their axles are set up on their trailers.
But they did it for decades before that road even existed.
Logging trucks.
But yeah, I mean, logging trucks to get all.
They still do it, but you watch them, they'll back traffic up and it depends on where their wheels are set, how, what the turning radius says. And we widen that left turn, so that that road is different than what it used to be.
There is traffic supposedly.
Talking about Debarco.
Mining. But nobody evades it, and we talked about that before, for them to hit, so they can see what the traffic's doing, they gotta go clear out.
Yes.
I I get it.
So there's problems there that need to be.
So that, anyway, I'm just saying that we can't just put a sign out there, it's not, it's not going to stop, but we gotta fix the problem. And that's, it needs to get reflected in the transportation TSP, which it's not listed right now.
But minimum, though, like, I'm sorry, it's just, I've been like six of these meetings where we talked about the GPS app and not having trucks on the road, like, whose responsibility is it to contact the GPS company, see if that could happen?
I, mine, my friend who brought it up, says that there is no GPS indicator that says go down Langinsend.
Can we get a report back on that though?
We need to legislatively mandate pass the the no truck route, the truck route, right? Because there's, there's commercial truck vehicles that if they don't have, it says where you see the local delivery.
Yeah.
That's a truck route, and so they're, it's not going to stop them, right? If I go load of stuff, I can still go. And the GPSs won't do it, but what they do do is, once that's a truck route, then it's good, commercial truck drivers have typically have a GPS that has truck routes in it, and so it'll stop them from taking that route, it's not going to stop the traffic from.
My buddy tells me though, that what's going on now is the local knowledge is, is that you can't make that turn on mining, so go down Langinsand or Debarco.
Well, that's local, that's fine.
That's where speed humps.
More roundabouts.
All right, Richard. I just want to say thank you to both you tonight. Lots been said, but I know, especially with Jenny's, that's a really hard pill to swallow, and it's a hard thing to present that, so thank you for that. And then, this is exciting, actually, this is exciting news, I think with the the fees and all of that. Because it's a chance to to start working toward a better non-sinking business model ship. So that was really all I have to thank you tonight. Thanks, Rick. Hopefully, I'm not stealing your thunder, but it is the fiftieth anniversary of the Sandy Mountain Festival this year. And if you follow them on social media, they do have a social media page and they're selling shirts. So I would highly suggest, if you want a shirt, you get one sooner than later, before they're sold out, they're kind of cool looking. So, yeah, for a fifty year, it's kind of a, you know, kind of a cool idea. That's all, yeah.
All right. I thought Carl would ask about the entryway grass down there by, but it but it got cut down. And I was thinking, someone was thinking. It was gonna come up, but so.
The one that Johnny Scott.
Still there, but, uh, but yeah, so appreciate cleaning it up with our entryway. And just a shout out to Shelley, who had came both to the Economic Development Advisory Board and the Sandy Net Advisory Board was based off of the Comprehensive Plan Stakeholders Meeting Group. And so hopefully you got the information, anyway, participated in both. So in that, so we're kicking that, you know, getting it going and moving forward.
For my report, the old church driving downtown on Highway twenty six, it's kind of got through some improvements, I don't know what we call that, that, you know.
It's a yoga shop.
The yoga shop for a while, it was different, it looks fantastic though, try to look for it the next time you drive by. And we had, you know, obviously, just tragic school shootings happened in this country over the last, you know, couple of weeks. And I, just a shout out to, you know, the leadership in in this community or School Resource Officer Program, the school board, the leadership in our school district for really taking on school security and stuff like we have. You know, I mean, nothing's foolproof, right? I mean, certainly not in this day and time. But we are a community that has taken those issues very seriously and proactively planned for it and kept our community or trying to keep our community safe, so just thank you to everybody who's been, who've been part of that. I finally have had some opportunities to catch up on some things, as I've mentioned, the homelessness meeting. What a fantastic meeting. You know, the the one thing I would say on that though, is I know one of the takeaways was, and say, you know, I mean, the city needs to be part of it, but not like the entire part, right? This is not us owning that, but, you know, that is, that can't be used as an excuse not to be part of the conversation, a part of it. And, you know, we had Sandy Connect there, we heard from NUPA and others where financing is becoming an issue. And these organizations become that much stronger when they're applying for things, when they have a government partner there that's partnering. I know Rich brought that up in the conversation as well. And so I don't know if we have, you know, staff that goes to Sandy Connect or tries to be part of that. And we have our own homelessness task force meetings for trying to do, but not own it, but be part of the overall solution and stuff that, you know, is being talked about right now. And I just, I thought some of that was great, rates, stuff, I think a lot of it is exciting as well. But we do, we gotta be careful on rates and it's, it's not going to be a fun couple of years, it hasn't been a fun couple of years when dealing with rates, but just kind of is, it's, this is where we are. And then closing, I'll know the results of the governor's primary election this last time, and it quite go my way. But, you know, and I said this in my remarks that day, and I said after I ran for mayor, is, it's like, I mean, one of the coolest things in the world, if you ever want to live in your hometown, you should go and try and do it, maybe Sandy's your hometown, maybe, you know, somewhere else out there is. It's really cool doing these things from a community where you know so many people, they support you. And there's people here that don't, like very much do not agree with my positions, but in a lot of them tell me that and treat me like dog, you know what? But a lot of them put that to the side and still support and treat and and lift you up. And that really is the, you know, the best part about this community that I've always really enjoyed. So just, just a broad thank you, just, it's been hard, the results were kind of hard, but having a community like this that you live in, pretty cool, makes it that much easier. So, thank you guys, appreciate it.